Assalamualaikum wr wb Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh Brother Said how are you Brother Said
Alhamdulillah Brother Alhamdulillah How are you doing?
Alhamdulillah I'm fine thank you
Alhamdulillah Good 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 getting hotter
Yeah 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 April already yeah
So Mr. Vantijay and the Chairman Professor Noor have already joined
Alhamdulillahirobbilalamin
Professor Assasna Dr. Professor Assasna Assalamualaikum Masya Allah everybody have joined You're on mute Prof
Sorry 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 yeah
Alhamdulillah Masya Allah I think we have close to 1000 registrations that's really good
Insyaallah
Alhamdulillah but we as per experience we think one-third or half of them join on the day of the event
Yeah
InshaAllah
Dr. Sultan how are you?
Waalaikumsalam Dr. Rizwan how are you doing how are you doing?
We actually have about 12,000 registrations which is very interesting for a public hearing
Alhamdulillah Alhamdulillah You are dealing with the Southeast Asian market
Yes 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 Masya Allah and also because you know it's a virtual event so people from across the world tend to attend You know we hope that you know public hearing as the purpose is is to regain feedback and comments on the exposure draft So the more we receive the better it gets
Yeah InshaAllah Brother Omar hasn't joined I can see yet
Yeah I can see well So Dr. Sultan what time is the iftar?
Iftar here around 6pm almost 6pm
Okay okay
Brother Said Mr. Vantijay is with us now but he is if you can help yeah he is using AIU Putri name If you can rename him to Mr. Vantijay
Okay I can see there are two Miss Putri here I don't know which one
Yeah yeah one of them is Pak Vantijay maybe
You can ask him to switch on his video
Alhamdulillah Vantijay yeah this one
Waalaikumsalam warahmatullahi wabarakatuh Assalamualaikum Assalamam I'm sorry I couldn't change the my secretary name on the screen
Yeah
Ah yeah it's already changed yeah
Yeah thank you thank you
Okay
Mr. Vantijay how are you? I'm fine fine Masya Allah Ramadan uwaarik and Ramadan karim to you
Sister Kunita are you here? Sister Kunita Professor Professor Noor the Chairman of Basnas
I think he was there I saw
She's still there but maybe she stepped out or something
Okay
Okay Mr. Noor
Assalamualaikum Assalamualaikum
Come Pak Vantijay
Assalamualaikum Professor Noor
Alhamdulillah
Challa well welcome to this public hearing which is jointly organized with yourselves
Yeah thank you Master Rizwan Malik
That's right that's right we really appreciate your support you know in organizing this event I think couple of more minutes and then we should join
Brother would you want to ping Brother Omar?
He's joining now Waalaikumsalam Brother Umar your voice is low Can you hear me better now?
Yes
You're not listening Brother you're not listening I can request for everyone to be on mute if they're not speaking And we'll start in couple of minutes but I think we can switch off the videos and then we can invite everyone Can I request AIOF Secretariat to please mute everyone who is not speaking Bismillahirrahmanirrahim Alhamdulillahirobbilalamin Wassalamu ala sharaafil anbiyari wal mursalin Nabiyyan Muhammad wa ala ali wa sahbihi ajma'in Rabbi shrahlithadri wayathirli amri Wa halal kutta'min lisanii yafthah kauli Excellencies distinguished guests industry colleagues brothers and sisters Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh And a very good day to all of you On behalf of accounting and auditing organization for Islamic financial institutions And its partners for this particular event KN EKS National Committee for Islamic Economy and Finance based Malaysia based in Indonesia Basnas PPZ IIUM Salahin and Chartered Institute of Islamic Finance Professionals It gives us immense pleasure to welcome you to this public hearing Which is focused on AIOF Financial Accounting related standard And a very important standard indeed which is financial reporting for zakat The session will last for about two hours And it's more of an engaging session to receive feedback comments And and general feedback on the overall exposure draft If you have already gone through the exposure draft and then you can share your comments However we will share the link to the exposure draft and the link as well which will also be later on presented The flow of the event is very simple It's there will be three welcoming remarks starting with KN EKS Which will be delivered by Mr. Vantijay Rahajo Managing Director of the firm A very important firm indeed for the development of Islamic economy and finance in Indonesia Which then develops the global economy It will be followed by a welcoming remark by the Chairman of Basnas Who has kindly joined us as well for this session and we really appreciate the time they're sparing Followed by a welcoming remark by the CEO of Salahin Sharia Advisory Professor Asen Lasane Who will be speaking on behalf of IIUM as well as Chartered Institute of Islamic Finance Professionals There will be a brief introduction on AIOF which will be presented by myself after the welcoming remarks And after that there will be a detailed presentation on the exposure draft Of the standard on financial reporting for zakat This will be the flow of the event it will last about two hours This is going to be you know we would wish it to be very interactive discussion And of course the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of your screen can be used for any questions Related to the topic So before any further ado let me invite the Managing Director of KN EKS Mr. Vantijay Rahajo to deliver his welcoming remarks
Thank you Brother Isan Malik Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh Bismillahirmanirrahim Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh Honorable Secretary General of AAOEVP Mr. Omar Mustafa Anshari Honorable Chairman of Basnas Papa Professor Kajid Nur Ahmad Honorable CEO of Salahin Sharia Advisory Professor Asen Lasanya Honorable Representative from Pusat Pungutan Zakat Malaysia And honorable representative from IIUM and all participants ladies and gentlemen Very good day to you all first of all Let us praise and thank God Almighty for his grace and mercy So we may gather here in this important event It is my great pleasure to give welcoming remarks in the public hearing of AOF Financial accounting standard and on the financial reporting for zakat today Let us convey our salawat and salaam to our beloved Prophet Muhammad Shallallahu Alaihi Wasallam Greatest rule for all humankind Ladies and gentlemen as you know zakat is one of the pillars of in Islam shows The spirit of supporting just economy with basis of distribution mechanisms in overcoming various economic and social gaps Throughout Islamic history zakat has been proven to be the main physical instrument Used to sustain the country's economy Especially in overcoming poverty and improving people's welfare An effective zakat system along with integrated community empowerment mechanism Can increase the welfare of zakat recipients by being able to move from zakat recipients to an independent level as a zakat peers Zakat system with this integrated empowerment will collectively Support the growth of new production centers that can contribute To the sustainability and inclusiveness of the national development programs Integration of zakat management with national economic policies and zakat management That comply with principles of good governance will contribute cause to the improvement of the national economy In this case the zakat system needs to have superior governance qualities To gain the trust of the public in collecting and as well as distributing zakat funds In an attractive and efficient accountable manner As a country with the largest Muslim majority in the world Indonesia has a very great potential to optimize the Islamic social finance sector Indonesia has the highest generosity culture in the world according to Charities Aid Foundation World Giving Index 2018 Based on the 2021 Indonesia zakat outlook released by Basnas The potential would reach to equivalent of 3% of GDP in 2020 However the realization of the achievement was still not yet optimized Regardless of the large potential for zakat access Some of the challenges must be faced include one is the low level of public literacy towards zakat And secondly many zakat management institutions especially those operating with the scope Of villages subdistress or mosque have not yet used the zakat accounting Preparation of zakat financial report according to accounting standard is important in zakat governance system This is to increase the accountability and transparency of zakat management institutions especially in Indonesia Zakat institution must also include the right bookkeeping and be ready to be audited by a public accountant because Auditing is one of the important factors to increase the public trust in zakat management institution With above consideration national zakat management transformation program are very important to do And are expected to support the performance of zakat stakeholders So that they can grow significantly and strengthen the foundation of sustainable and inclusive national development Ladies and gentlemen as one of the efforts to achieve good zakat governance system Especially in Indonesia KN EKS together with AOF Basnas IIUM and Salahin Sharia Advisory Today's organizing public hearing on AOF Financial Accounting Standard on Financial Reporting for Zakat This public hearing is an effort to improve the governance of the zakat system based on the international standard And in line with the national zakat management transformation programs In closing my speech I encourage the public to share their views and suggestions On the draft of the AOF Financial Accounting Standard on the Financial Reporting for Zakat Finally I do hope all of you will have the productive dialogue and fruitful discussion during this public hearing Thank you for your kind attention wabilahitabig walhidayah Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh
Thank you very much Mr. Vantijay Rahajo as usual a very candid you know views on a very important topic And what better month to discuss this topic than the month of Ramadan Where the significance and importance in general of the topic enhances So with that let me thank you very much for your time and we hope that you will be able to stay with us For the duration if possible if your time permits for the duration of this public hearing And thank again for KN EKS for being a very important partner for a number of initiatives that AIOF and KN EKS are putting together For the development of Islamic economics and finance industry in general Not only in Indonesia but for the global developments InshaAllah thank you very much Let me let me swiftly moving on let me have a picture of inviting respected Mr. Noor Ahmad The Chairman of Basnas to deliver his welcoming remarks Professor Noor
Okay
Yes
Yes Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh
Waalaikumsalam
Ma'ali alamin alam liha'atil muhasabati wal muroja'ah Al muasasatil malya islamiya Al ma'ali al mutir al tamfidi lil natsratil wataniyatil akhi shadiyah Patsumir ashari Au mai ma'siluhu Ro'isul jamia islamiya ala arabiya Malaysia Au mai ya nuhu'an Ro'isu majma sholihin Au mai ya nuhu'an Ro'isu majlisita rohmarika tafsiri zakat al malesi Ayu al hudur Alhamdulillahirobbilalamin Was sholatu wassalamu ala asyrfil amya wal musalin Sayidina wa ma'ulana muhabibina Muhammadu ala alihi wa ashabi ajma'in La khawla wa la quwwata illa billahi ala ilan dim amabad Famin ma ta'arofna savian An na'itarza zakat fil mustawa al alami Tatoorat fil aqtil mandi bi shaklin kabir Fa bi ruju'iraal pahsil madani Alladi adzura'ahu ma'hatul bukhosir islamiyah wata dri IRCI lebang asli Al islami lita'miyatim akhir islamikifratmin bank Yadharu annal imkana tirithafsiri zakat fil mustawa al alami Tasiru ila mayakrobu min homsumi'ah milyar dolar Amerika ila situmi'ah milyar dolar Amerika sanawiyat Wabfil muqornati fein al majmu'atil kamnatil amwal Az zakati Tatarawaku min ashrah milyar dolar Amerika ila khamsata ashrah milyar dolar Amerika sanawiyat Innatafsila zakat Alladi yatajaya tu kulla ami Lam ya jal ya khlufu mashakilatata tolubu ma alajatan merat somatan likuli mim muasasati zakati wal musaqir Walidzalika yacibu antrokiza itarot zakati alama ba'til hukumat issalimati Li anna hadil marosatil doruriyatun ditatbikiha fi ciba'at zakati wata uzi'ihah Wazhalika li anna itarza zakati tarqayt wirtibaton wasikon bisikot il ammah Min na'hiatil ukrro Ya tolebut tarobutu wa qobilat astagil al bain Bishirkati fi hadzal aqsi raqmi luwatan alamiyatan li ardil bayanat il malyati Xostan fi mayta'allaku pitakorir il malya al mutalak bil inshita Lizhalika urahipu tarxiban haron fil mba'taratil lati naffatat ha Ha'iatul muhasabti lmar muljal bil muasasati il malya AIOEV Washabul maslahati al khorin fi tandimi hadzal baramis al muhin Innaz zakata min kibil sharikati ilha kaurun kabirun fi ta'wi muasasati zakati fi tamfidil baromi Al mutalikah pitakfifi min khittati il fakri Wal mushkilati il istimaiyat wal insaniyat watsalih Wafi syaki Indonesia Nata iju pahsina fi amin al fa'inu ashrun An naz zakata lati yu mkiu tafsiruha min sharikati parawat aksaru mim'i ah terliyun rupiah Kamata thurul bayanat al waqya Ila ziyatati musamat sharika fi zakati min sanaatin ila sanaatin ukrro Kamaa annartifa'ah musamat sharikati fi tafiz zakati ya tamasha aybat Ma'a ihtiyatisha sharikati rita'hi ti mi'yarit takkori ril malyati Fi Indonesia lataina bil fili mi'yaron muh Fi Indonesia lataina bil fili mi'yaron muhasibi yata'allaku bi'artit taqorir il-malya. Azakawiyah is sharikati il-qaima al-shari'ati mundu al-fayni wa sab'ah. Wa bitadi asbachul ma'air ashotirati ala ha'iati muhasabti al-mu'assasati al-malya al-islamiya. AIOIF murajan wa madaan asasian lil jihad tanbiya fi Indonesia fi ta'kwiri syes timu hasabti zakat fil mustawa. Bihaisu yusbihu al-pittaqorir al-malya azakawiyah. Aksaro shamuran wa yu'lepi ihdiya jati shona. Akhiran nak mulu al-layu afira hadal mi'yar. Namujan ita'qiril mali fakas. Wa la sayu ti aibon ila ta'siri mustawa makrifat sharikati il-qaimati al-shari'ati fi Indonesia khawla mata'ahamiyati zakati walti. Sa'istatu ta'siruha min hadi sharika. Asayidat wa sa'dah ali'huwa wal'huwat a'isa. Atta kitu anna hada kullu ma yu'mkiinuni taktimu. Pamaratan ukr tahniatan kabiratan liha'iati al-muhasabati wal-muraj'a lil mu'assasati al-malya al-islamiya. AIOIF wa shurqaiha ala itlaki hadal mi'yar. Barakallah fi kullu ma tab'udulu nahu min al-a'mal il-khairiyati wal-amal is-samiyah. Fi mu'assati al-akharin wa ta'siri rifa'iyah al-uma. Fi min khilad is zakat. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Shukran kasira.
Jazakumullah Khair, respected professor Noor Ahmad. Thank you very much for your keynote or welcome remarks. Or and we really appreciate the time that you have extended for this public hearing and the support that comes from a very important institution from Indonesian point of view, responsible for everything related to Zakat. So thank you very much for your time and inshallah, we look forward to working together on projects for the mutual benefit. Thank you, thank you very much, Chair, for your time. With that, let me, let me move to our next welcoming remarks, which will be delivered by Professor Ashan Lasasna, CEO of Salehin Sharia Advisory and he will be delivering on behalf of International Islamic University Malaysia, Salehin Sharia Advisory as well as the Chartered Institute of Islamic Finance Professionals. Professor?
Thank you very much. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wa salatu wa salaam. As-sulik Kareem. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to express my thanks and appreciation to AOF for this important collaboration on the important standard on public hearing on the financing, sorry, on the financing reporting for Zakat. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge the institutions that have been collaborating with us in this event. And namely, I recognize PPZ, which is the Zakat Collection Center and the Maui Majlis Agama Islam that was registered on seventeen November nineteen eighty-nine as a corporate amil and power to collect Zakat in Malaysia. And we have with us here Azhan Ismail, Senior General Manager. The second institution is International Islamic University Malaysia, IUM, a leading university here in Malaysia that offers different courses, including Islamic finance courses. And we have with us Associate Professor Nuraini Muhammad Arifin. The third institution is CF, the Chartered Institute of Islamic Finance Professional, that was established in two thousand fifteen as a professional body for Islamic finance professionals to support the capacity building agenda for the industry by setting professional standard to drive the next phase of Islamic finance human capital development. And we have with us Dr. Azura Otman, the Chief Executive Officer. And of course, Salehin Sharia Advisory, which is a registered Sharia consultancy firm by the Security Commission Malaysia. On behalf of this institution in Malaysia, I hope and I wish to have a very fruitful discussion engagements in this important public hearing. With that, thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Thank you, thank you very much, Professor. As Andy said, you know, and thank you for all the support in, in, in the collaboration between these very important institutions and AOF. And we hope this will be first of the many events and, you know, similar initiatives that we put together for the development of the industry, for the, for enhancing awareness and advocacy of the important subjects related to Islamic economics, banking and finance, inshallah. So thank you very much for your support as usual in this, in this initiative. Thank you. Now, quickly moving on, you know, the, the next part of the presentation is basically few minutes on, on what AOF does. For those, I'm sure a lot of people are aware of, of the role of AOF. But give you some updates and some, and the importance of this, this public hearing. You know, I'd like to do that through this presentation, which I'm sure is visible to you now. So now, AOF, for all those who don't know, is a, is a not-for-profit organization and stands for Accounting and Auditing Organization for Islamic Financial Institutions. It was set up in nineteen ninety-one in Bahrain, its headquartered in Bahrain. And it was set up with the help of Islamic Development Bank and a number of other important institutions. The mandate of AOF, it's, it's the, the leading standard-setting body within Islamic banking and finance. There are other standard-setting bodies as well, which has a mandate of, of different nature. But AOF's mandate is to develop standards in five important areas. These are Sharia, accounting, auditing, governance and ethics. These standards are developed with the help of three important boards. The Sharia Board, which has renowned Sharia scholars from, from all over the world. So people, you know, scholars are representing various different geographical locations. They come together on the, on this board and they put together the standard for the global Islamic banking and finance industry. Similarly, the Accounting Board, which develops the accounting standards. These are experts and leaders from regulatory, regulators, banks and financial institutions, advisory organizations, consulting firms, who are, who, who sit on the accounting board and help in developing the accounting-related standards. The Governance and Ethics Board that AOF has is a recent establishment. It was, it was set up for the first time in two thousand fifteen. And they develop standards related to auditing, governance and ethics. Again, it has leaders and professionals from, from different parts of the world, representing regulators, banks and financial institutions, advisory firms, so on and so forth. So in these five areas of standards development, AOF, as of March twenty twenty-one, AOF has hundred sixteen standards and technical pronouncements in issue. This includes sixty Sharia standards, thirty-five accounting standards, about eight auditing standards, fifteen governance standards and three ethics-related standards. Now, AOF, as I said, has been established since the year nineteen ninety-one. And since then, it has been developing standards. The, the work that AOF has done for the last three decades, the, the, the fruit of that hard work was, you know, we, we, we got to know through a very comprehensive exercise that we completed last year, which showed, which basically shared with us that the AOF standards are followed in various forms in about forty jurisdictions around the world. This includes countries that follow AOF standards fully. Some countries adopt AOF standards partially. Some use them as a guidance to develop their local standards. And some allow supplementary reporting as well as there is voluntary adoption of AOF standards. So as I said, I mean, there are forty jurisdictions around the world where AOF standards are followed in various forms. Now, to enhance AOF's, to enhance understanding of AOF standards, AOF offers capacity building programs in the form of two professional qualifications. One related to accounting and the other related to Sharia advisory and auditing, very important qualifications. And the way we look at them are they assist in enhancing understanding of AOF standards for the global audience, which then helps in the adoption and implementation of the standards. These two qualifications, of course, more than two thousand people have, have, have taken these qualifications successfully. Additionally, AOF organizes conferences and events on a regular basis to enhance understanding of AOF standards, which in the form of conferences, events, events like this that we have today and other workshops that, that are generally organized on various standards. There is also a technical bulletin, which is Journal of Islamic Finance Accountancy that AOF also publishes on a biannual basis. Again, it's, it's a publication for us, which helps us in stimulating thought, provoking discussions as well as putting together ideas, which then feeds into the standard development process. The work that AOF does is with the help, or, you know, it's a not-for-profit organization. So the work that AOF does is, is with the help of its members. And as we speak, we have more than hundred forty active institutional members from different parts of the world. These include regulators, banks and financial institutions, universities and other important institutions, which has some interest or business related to Islamic finance. As I mentioned, and this is a very important slide, the way we look at it, AOF develops standards in five areas. The Sharia standards, accounting standards, governance standards, auditing standards and ethics-related standards. We believe that these standards are not unrelated standards, rather they are interrelated standard. One feeds into the other standard. So the Sharia standards, which has received a lot of importance globally, they basically lay the foundation and it differentiates between what is permissible and what is non-permissible and what is in the gray area. So they lay the foundation for, to conduct Islamic financial activities in line with Sharia. The, the accounting standard that AOF develops helps institutions present, record and report Islamic financial transactions in line with their own practice sticks, in line with the Sharia principles. And we believe that true culmination of, of, of the, of the principles is achieved through the accounting standards that are developed. And there is a strategy in place where we as AOF are bridging the gap between IFRS and the AOF Financial Accounting Standard, one that we are discussing today here. Similarly, the governance standard that AOF develops puts in place systems and infrastructure for the implementation of the Sharia principles and rules. So they are there, the governance standard helps you in the implementation of Sharia standards as well as the accounting standards. The auditing standards are there, as the name suggests, they are there to assess that the reporting and recording and presenting of Islamic financial transactions is in line with Sharia principles and the accounting accounting standard as in line with the Sharia principles. Similarly, the, you know, last but not least, the ethics-related standard are very important. As you would appreciate, ethics is receiving more and more prominence from the global industry. And you know, it has become part of very important, you know, it has become, and become an important part of various important qualifications. When we talk about CFA, we talk about accounting qualifications. So ethics-related standard have been issued, there are three ethics-related standard that have been issued by AOF. And you know, the law, the latest one is for, is for of ethics for Islamic financial professionals. And we believe ethics is a continuous reminder to Islamic financial professionals on how to conduct their businesses in, in the best of manners, in line with the Sharia. So these are again five areas, very important areas, we believe that they are interrelated and jurisdiction and/or a country can adopt all of these standards, all of these standards or select standards so that they are benchmarked with the highest standards globally acceptable. As I said, you know, the adoption of AOF standard is truly global. So the hard work that AOF has done for the last thirty years, we can see that in, in the, on this table, on the left-hand side, we have jurisdictions, while on the right-hand side, we have countries. So AOF standards, the Sharia standards globally are followed in various forms in about thirty-one countries, while the accounting standards are followed in thirty-six countries. And similarly, the governance, auditing and ethics-related standard are followed in about thirty-five countries. And similarly, of course, there are more than one jurisdiction in one country. So a country like Bahrain, AOF standards are mandatory. So it has, also our Sharia standards have become part of the law. So whenever AOF issues a standard, it becomes part of the law and local banks and financial institutions have to follow AOF standard. Similarly, a country like UAE, where our AOF Sharia standards are mandatory. So all banks and Islamic financial institutions have to follow AOF Sharia standard. A country like Oman, where our accounting and auditing standards are mandatory. While there are other countries around the world which, which have partial adoption, a country like Pakistan, where they have partial adoption for one of the standard and they use other standards as guidance to develop their local standards. So this is various regulators around the world adopt AOF standards in various ways. Then we will also share a detailed report that we have put together in the, in the chat or question-answer tab at the bottom for you to go through. And if there are any questions, you can always reach out to us. Of course, AOF standards are available in different languages. This includes Arabic, English, French, Russian, Turkish, Urdu, while efforts are ongoing to, to translate AOF standards into Bahasa Indonesia, Bengali and Mandarin. This is again to assist understanding of AOF standards globally. The professional qualifications are available, you know, SIPA and CSA are the qualification that AOF offers. And these have already become part of fit and proper criteria for various regulators. So a country like Bahrain, the central bank of Bahrain has made it mandatory for any CFO of an Islamic bank to have SIPA qualification if, before he becomes a CFO. So it's part of fit and proper criteria in, in, in different countries. These are some of the publications. On the left-hand side, we have Joyfa. We will share the link with you. These are academic publications to help understanding of AOF standards and also a platform to discuss deliberate key issues within the, within the industry, which then feeds into the standard development process that AOF has. Of course, AOF organizes various conferences and events like the event that we are, we have here today. These are international conferences. Usually, they were organized in a physical format, but due to COVID nineteen, we had to resort last year to virtual conferences. So last year, we organized four virtual conferences, which were attended by a lot of people from across the globe. I'm going to wrap it up very quickly, just talking about the event that we have today. It's a, it's a very important event, you know, and, you know, it's a, it's part of our standard development process. As you can see on this page, AOF has a very comprehensive standard development process, which starts from the identification of a topic. And then a working group is formed, which includes experts and subject matter experts from different parts of the world, who then help in shaping the standard through its various stages. Before it reaches, of course, after due approval from the technical board in here, where as we are talking about financial accounting-related standard. So approval, after approval of Accounting Board, it is, the, the document which we call exposure draft is shaped. The exposure draft is a ready document, which The exposure draft is a ready document which is presented to stakeholders in an event like this that we are having. To receive feedback, comments on the, on the document. And, and once we receive these comments and feedback, these are then presented to the, to the board. For them to be incorporated so that the final standard that AOF issues is comprehensive. And it includes all different angles, it's comprehensive from all angles. So that the global industry can follow it afterwards. So as I said, I mean, it's a very comprehensive process. And so it's a very important gathering for us, this, the one that we are having today. And you will really appreciate the feedback and comments that come together from either through live or after hour of this meeting. So again, you know, the importance of this gathering. It's an opportunity for AOF to present its exposure draft for the industry stakeholders to offer their comments and feedback. Our, our role today is very simple, we are going to present to you the, the standard in the form of PowerPoint presentation. And it may, and, and, and generally that's, that's our job. But your role as an attendee is to provide comments. I think these are very important opinions, recommendations, views and suggestions on the overall exposure draft. So this can be in terms of, you know, any, any kind of comments are welcome. Of course, this can be in the form of highlighting missing something that is important completely. Or covering it inadequately. Or if certain point is covered, you know, is actually incorrect or wrong. So we would really appreciate if you can correct us, share your experience, feedback with us. So that we can incorporate that within, within the final standard when we put together. So if, if you have any comments after the event as well, you can share it on, at accounting@aof.com. It will be, it is a very important thing for us. So last slide before I wrap it up. This session, in some housekeeping rule, this session of course is being recorded and has been recorded. The slides are same as the exposure draft, so there are no separate slides that are available for, for this, for this exposure draft. So you can refer to the exposure draft itself. If there are any questions that you have, please use the Q and A tab at the bottom. And we want this to be interactive, if you would like to ask question by voice, please raise your hand and we will allow questions by voice as well. Of course, this webinar is, is recognized for one AOF CPD hour, this is very important for, for AOF fellows. And over and above, if you have any other questions, suggestions, feedback for AOF. Or if your institution would like to become a member of AOF, you can always reach out to us at membership@aof.com. So you know, with that, I, I, I thank you very much. Let me, you know, this is, this is from me for now, but let me now invite. Have the pleasure of inviting the Secretary General of AOF, Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari to present. To present the standard in the next hour and a half. And I'm sorry, Brother Umar, if I took some extra time. Inshallah, you know, it was for the benefit of everyone. Thank you very much.
Huzzubillahi minash shaytanir regime, Bismillahir Rahmanir Rahim. Rabbish rahli sadri, vayyasirli amri, wahlu lachtatam il lisanii, yafqahu qali. Respectable Mr. Vancher Harju, respectable Professor Noor Rahmat. Dr. Hassan Lehasna and other dear brothers and sisters. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. It is indeed a great pleasure to be with you again. And particularly this time, we are, we are holding this event in collaboration with our institution, brotherly institutions. From the, from the, from the Far East, from the Southeast Asia. And we are very much thankful to these institutions for supporting the cause of AOF. And supporting the cause of Islamic finance and Islamic economic system and being part of this initiative. We are also thankful to all of you individually who have, who are attending this event in Masha Allah such a large number. And we hope that inshallah this event will be fruitful. For number one, the, the standard-setting process itself. So that we are able to get better and better feedback. And additionally, we are able to understand and get. Get more and more understanding of the needs of the market. And as to how the market will be able to understand and implement this standard. With that, without further delay, I would like to take you directly through the standard and will discuss the important issues related to the standard. Approach will be that I will be taking you through the standard completely, but important areas, I will stop by. I will read them aloud, where necessary, I will explain. Whatever comments we receive from you, some of them may be subject to an answer that I can provide. Other comments will be taken and noted for the benefit of the working group and the board. When they actually consider those comments and finalize the standard in line with those comments. This standard will actually replace our earlier standard on zakah. The standard itself is a financial reporting standard. And it is primarily for the Islamic financial institutions. So this is one aspect of zakah that we are talking about. It means that one aspect is, that is as to how zakah should be recorded and presented in the financial statements of Islamic financial institutions. This is the aspect that this standard is talking about. Another aspect is as to how zakah shall be calculated on, on Islamic financial institutions and corporate entities. This is available in our Sharia standard on zakah. Our earlier accounting standard on zakah also partially covered that. And that was one of the reasons of revision that, that needed improvement in line with the Sharia standard. So that was one of the reasons why, why we actually needed this new standard. Another part of this project that we will continue in due course, inshallah. Is, is development of detailed guidelines on computation of zakah. So that will be in line with the Sharia standards. It will not be a part of the accounting, accounting, accounting standard itself, rather it will be issued as a, as a guideline. So the same working group, inshallah, will be commencing its focus, work on the focus part related to the computation of zakah. So if you guys feel that this standard does not cover the computation of zakah, you need to understand that this is about. About the presentation and disclosure, recording and reporting of zakah in the financial statements of Islamic financial institutions. While the second part related to computation, inshallah, will be coming in due course. However, this standard includes, and you will see when I will take you through. Disclosure with regard to the broad basis of computation of zakah. As to how zakah has been computed on the institution and what are the primary differences. Between the accounting base of financial, accounting base of assets and liabilities. Versus the zakah based on assets and liabilities on which the zakah is computed. We, in all the standards, we initially have the preface section and, and the introduction section. Some of the introduction has been provided to you, so unless there is a comment on that, I will move ahead from the preface and the introduction section. Except for the list of key changes. For those brothers and sisters who have been, who have been implementing or at least have read the earlier zakah standard from AOF. Which is, which is standard number, standard number nine on FAS and thirty-five on, on Sharia side. Those who have read those, they will be able to identify more differences and, and, and the rationale for different differences. So the main difference is, the first one, the revised standard is primarily a presentation and disclosure standard and does not cover the computation and measurement. As I mentioned, it will be covered in separate guidance. The revised standard provides guidance on two main categories of the institutions. That is institutions obliged to pay zakah and institutions not obliged to pay zakah. There are subcategories and subtypes as well, when we will go through the standard, we'll see. The accounting and financial reporting requirements such as recording. Such as recognition, presentation and disclosure shall apply to institutions who are obliged to pay zakah on behalf of certain or all stakeholders. This is one of the important areas that the earlier standard was primarily handling zakah for the shareholders. While here we are talking about zakah applicable to stakeholders other than shareholders as well. So it makes it a significant difference. And actually, I would like to touch upon one topic here, that it is very important for the Islamic financial institutions to provide information either to deduct and pay zakah. Or to provide information enabling them to pay, to compute and pay zakah. To the stakeholders who are not shareholders but still have participatory interest in the institution like profit and loss distribution, profit and loss. Sharing deposit accounts or unrestricted investment accounts as we call them. Or Sukuk and other participatory investments where the, in, in where the stakeholders have equity interest and in the institution. So different type of, different type of transactions as to how much zakah is applicable on them. And as to how, how it needs to be computed, it is something that we have discussed in this standard. With regard to the, the disclosure part, not primarily on the computation part. But this is one important aspect from this standard as well, that once it is implemented, we believe that it will be in the overall benefit of Islamic financial institutions as well. Let me give you an example, for example, I personally have an investment in Islamic bank. Now that Islamic bank does not inform me as of today that where they have invested my, my investment account. If my investment is for long-term profit purposes and not for immediate settlement. And it has been invested in such assets which are not subject to zakah. For example, for example, if these are invested in, in Ijarah assets which are not subject to zakah. In that situation, my investment will not be subject to zakah if it is for long-term gains purposes. This is just one example where we need to understand that different stakeholders may have different computation of zakah based on the information available. If information is not available to me by the institution, I will never be able to actually compute this thing. And actually, I will end up paying zakah according to the total amount of investment rather than the actual zakah amount. There is no harm in paying more, I may end up paying more even after those computation, but this is important to understand that. And this is also important to understand that Islamic financial institutions at time need to, need to be more competitive. And they have to be competitive not only against the conventional institutions, but they have to be competitive in terms of other investment opportunities. So if I can, I can, I can make an investment in a, in a, in a property to be rented out, I'm not subject to zakah. So my net effective yield is more. While in case of a common investment in Islamic bank, my investment is subject to zakah. Which means that I will end up paying more zakah, so my net yield is less. Again, as I mentioned, there is no harm in paying more zakah, but at times we need to understand that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Has allowed exemptions on zakah for the, for the overall benefit of the, of the society. So, so whenever we see that, for example, the house is even more than one if they are for use or if they are for rent. Are, are exempt for zakah. Similarly, if the, if the plant and equipment which are used for production activities are exempt for zakah. We need to understand that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala encourages and the Islamic economic system actually encourages. The investments in productive activities, investments in activities which are more and more beneficial to the society. And are actually reproducing in the longer run rather than just being consumed or just being used. So in these situations, we need to understand that Islamic financial institutions, if they follow the new standard and make appropriate disclosures. With regard to zakah applicable on all participatory stakeholders and all relevant stakeholders to whom zakah may be applicable. It will actually help Islamic financial institutions to offer better net yield to their customers. It will be enabling the financial estate institutions, depositors and stakeholders to compute their zakah with more, more accuracy. And it will, it will support the productive activity in the economic system. So considering all these things together, I just wanted to touch upon this aspect which was not there in the earlier standard, which was mainly talking about zakah on shareholders. Here we have addressed zakah on shareholders as well as zakah on the investment account holders and other stakeholders. Recognition, measurement, etc., as we discussed, this part I have discussed already. Sharia standard for zakah, standard number thirty-five, whatever the general rulings with regard to zakah computation etc. are there in SS thirty-five. We did not reproduce them. The standard provides guidance on annual zakah base specific to the, specific to these, to the institution. Which includes a net amount subject to zakah on annual basis. The annual zakah base for the purpose of the standard shall not apply to those items that are not subject to zakah on annual basis. For example, assets which are subject to zakah on usher basis or zakah on home spaces etc. Which is that is based on the agriculture produce or the, or the, or the mineral produce. The revised standard provides the disclosures with regard to calculation of zakah base using the net asset method on valuation balances used to determine zakah base. So this is one more difference that earlier, the net investment, net invested fund method was also, also allowed. Here it is not allowed. Rather, rather, we have gone for the one, one single model which is in line with the Sharia standard. And which enables appropriate disclosure of zakah base. Do we have any comments here? Do we have any question-answer? I, I can't see anything in the question-answer tab, if anything is in the chat window, if you guys have put anything in.
There is, there is one Sheikh Muhammad Khan has said regarding rent. I think Ulama should revisit this issue as it has become an investment along with being a source of income.
Brother, I think that this is, is it in the chat window?
It's the last, it's the last chat, it's the last message.
Because, because every time referring to chat window again, because in chat window, there are a lot of other, other things as well. So finding a question is not easy. I will request everybody to keep, put the questions in the, in the question-answer tab. Brother, there are, there are arguments for that. In a nutshell, it's a Sharia issue, right now we are discussing the accounting standard. And there are lots of arguments, for sure, this can be an investment opportunity, but, but there are rationale. And there are, there are reasons as to how Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given that, that guidance in the Sharia. As to how we actually exempt some of the assets which actually help the economy to grow. And which actually have the, the benefits of the, of the, of the wealth being passed on to the, to the individuals in the society. So that will be, we, we will get off track, that's why I would not like to, like, I would not like to go into detail for this one. But at, but at a later stage, we can, we can consider this thing. We have a comment from Brother Habib Burahman, can we know what was the reason for not mentioning net invested fund method? Brother Habib, our Sharia standard actually considers the, the net asset method. Secondly, we wanted the zakah base to be disclosed. So even if we had allowed the net invested fund method, you still need to do the zakah base computation for the purpose of. For the purpose of, for the purpose of reporting. So you will end up doing both methods again. So net invested fund method was considered to be easier for some of the, for some of the colleagues. But actually, it will not enable you disclosing the, the total amount of, total amount of zakah base. Which is, which we considered is very important. When you refer to International Accounting Standard twelve on taxation. You can see that they ask on the Zefar taxation, the zakah-based computation, the tax-based computation. And they want a tax reconciliation as to how you reconcile the accounting income with the taxable income or the, or the accounting income versus the. Accounting tax expense versus the actual tax, tax expense. So considering these things, that these actually add value to the users of the financial statements. It was decided by the board that the zakah-based computation and the reconciliation is necessary. So net invested fund method, even if we allow, will, you will eventually, eventually again end up putting. So net invested fund method, even if we allow, uh will you will eventually eventually again end up putting the 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 in. Uh the the net asset method. Because you have to disclose the uh then the asset base. Now, when you go to the asset base, we will go towards towards asset base in the end. I can I can show you. That how actually it helps in reconciling and understanding the zakah base of our institution. And to understand as to how the zakah is computed by the institution for the purpose of different stakeholders. So this is uh this is uh like this was a conscious decision. For number one, number one matching to the Sharia standard which allowed only one method. And secondly, uh for ensuring the appropriate disclosures in form of zakah base. Uh we have uh we have a question from Mr. Malia Suliman. Could you please repeat on the fact on investment? Uh investment fund method is not allowed. Uh actually, it's the same question. So I just responded to that one. Uh again, just let me mention you one thing that when I respond to you. Does not mean that your question is 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 completely, you know, ignored. Uh we take still all of these comments and we take them back to the working group. We will discuss with the working group and the board if they after receiving these comments that lot of people actually still feel. That net investment invested fund methods might be useful. So one uh so maybe we can still take it to the board and we can request that. But as I mentioned, even if we allow it, we will still be requiring the zakah based computation. So you will end up doing both methods. Uh I I'm still unclear about institutions which is obligated to pay zakah. Uh is that zakah is calculated from the profit of company and how the shareholders are okay. This I will explain Insha Allah whenever we reach that relevant definition and section, Insha Allah I will explain this one. Just don't delete this one. Just keep this question. Once I respond to it, then delete it. Next question is. Do you agree with the thinking that according according to Islam that zakah is the origin source of theory of the concept of financial accounting? Included non-financial accounting. Uh brother, uh we there are two uh two uh two systems. Um like for Islamic accounting that we consider. The first one is where if you can have an ideal Islamic economic system. Uh some of the accounting principles that we want to apply in their true essence will be possible. However, right now we are living in a world that is not. Uh that is not having a true Islamic economic system even in a single country. So so considering considering the accounting purely based on zakah zakah values might not be appropriate. Now coming to uh now coming to if we if we were living in an ideal Islamic economic system and we had a real Islamic accounting mechanism. Ignoring the conventional things, still there might be for some issues in applying only zakah base. For example, zakah zakah based computations are for some of the things are at fair value. While from the profit and loss distribution perspective, it might not always be necessary that for zakah you go. To the fair value or to the relatable value. This is just one example only. So for the purpose of zakah, for the purpose of pure Islamic accounting, that the three sources of values would be. Values for zakah, number one, for sure I agree. Number two, values that are determinable to for the purpose of profit and loss distribution between the stakeholders. This is also important. And third, which is less important, which is but again important for the for 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 some of the purposes. Is the values that to be that are to be assigned for the inheritance purposes. So these are three main concepts from where the accounting values are to be determined. Uh but there are one some more issues as well. For example, when I mentioned about accounting for profit and loss and accounting for zakah. For example, some of the liabilities do not fall within the definition of an established liability. So they are not subject to zakah. But they may be, they they are important to be computed for the accounting for the accounting purposes. Uh because the profit and loss distribution without without taking those liabilities will not be appropriate. So these are maybe provisions etcetera. Which are important. Same things apply on the asset side that there may be some accruals which we do not meet the definition of. Uh an asset from the Sharia perspective for the zakah purpose. But they are an asset for the purpose of profit and loss computation because if we don't consider them for profit and loss distribution. The profit and loss distribution will be uh will be uh will be unjust and inequitable. So considering that, I would again say that while your while your concept is important and we I don't want to go in much detail for that one. But since it had a relevance with the with the standard, that that's why I actually wanted to discuss this one. So now how this standard handles this issue? We have the zakah base. So brother, we are asking all the Islamic financial institutions to provide information for zakah base. Which means that the the accounting on the basis of zakah is to be done for the purpose of. Uh for the purpose of disclosure and for the purpose of computation of zakah. So what you are asking, as I mentioned, we are not living in ideal Islamic economic system. We are trying to find our ways within the conventional system, but we are trying to put these disclosures. So this disclosure. Actually ensured the concept of financial report accounting as you mentioned for zakah purpose. Is 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 considered for the purpose of computation and disclosure of zakah base. And this is something that we believe is actually going to help Islamic finance industry and Islamic economics and as a whole. To move ahead in the right direction, Insha Allah. Uh we have a we have a we have a comment from brother Muttalib. Any false uh any false? My 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 apologies for for if I if I've not misspelled the name. So brother Muttalib, zakah measurement, as I mentioned, that zakah measurement will be included in the guidelines. Uh brother, all our accounting standards say that they are to be read with the Sharia standard. So whatever is written in the Sharia standard, we do not reproduce it unless it is extremely necessary. So our standard in the beginning says that it has to be read with the relevant Sharia standards, particularly standard number thirty five. So when it already says that it is to be read with that, we do not really need to repeat it. However, as I mentioned earlier, that that guidelines will be developed and we are shortly going to commence that project with regard to the guidelines. Which will be in line with this standard as well as the Sharia standard and they will provide complete guideline on computation part.
Uh excuse me, Dr. Omar. May I say something?
Please.
Dr. Omar, I'm Malia here. Uh I read the first part where it says that the revised standard. Is primarily a presentation and disclosure standard. And does not cover the computation and measurement. And you said that the guidelines will actually have the. Uh computation and measurement, am I right?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, okay. So why is that so? Because you know FAS nine clearly indicate how. Uh it should be measured and calculated. So I'm just not understanding why that particular aspects. In FAS nine was not incorporated in this ED. So that it comes together, you know. So that's my my my.
Thank you very much. Number one, number one, first AOFI is a comprehensive standard setter for comprehensive areas. So first thing is that some of the things are within the domain of one standard setting board. While the other things are in the domain of the other standard setting boards. Uh when the initial standards of AOFI were done, AOFI had only accounting standards board. And the accounting standards board had a Sharia committee that was and some of the members of the Sharia like accounting board were Sharia scholars. So the idea was that all initial accounting standards of AOFI included the Sharia rulings and Sharia principles. Even some of the standards, when you read them, you feel them more like Sharia standard rather than accounting standard. Like even our old Salam standard, our old accounting Murabah standard. They all actually contain the Sharia principles as well, some principles in the body text and some in the appendix. Later, AOFI started developing Sharia standards and had a new Sharia board which was completely independent from the accounting and auditing standards board and later. Governance board was also segregated. So now we develop standards in different areas by different boards. So for example, right now we are starting or have a project on zakah institution governance as well. The project is already started, like the background working has already started. But that is going to be a governance standard and it will be handled by the governance board. So the domain will be primarily governance. So the Sharia principles. Will be in the Sharia standard, accounting principles in the accounting standards and governance principles in the governance standards. Now, what will happen? With regard to uh regard to putting the same principles in accounting standard. We had our FAS nine and SS thirty five. Those who have read them, they have identified multiple differences. For example, some of the treatments are different and additionally the accounting standard allowed net invested fund method while Sharia standard did not allow that method and it. Stuck to only one method, that is net asset method. So so this is just one example and there we when we have gone through in detail, we know that there are different differences. Now, what is correct? FAS nine is correct or SS thirty five is correct? FAS nine was correct when it was issued, but later SS thirty five was issued. So it means that we need to update FAS 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 nine. Now, the problem was that if these are. For example, this asset is subject to zakat and this liability is adjustable for zakat or not adjustable for zakat. Do you think it's an accounting issue or primarily a Sharia issue? After long discussion, we believe it is a primarily a Sharia issue to determine whether this item is subject to zakat or this item is not subject to zakat. So first thing that we decided was that our accounting standard should not be contradicting with Sharia standard in any manner. So first thing we did where that we aligned both of them. Then we decided that Sharia standard came nearly ten years later. But accounting standard was not updated for eighteen twenty years. So maybe roughly after ten last Sharia standard number thirty five. Uh it it was issued nearly maybe ten years back roughly. So it means that for ten years, AOFI has two standards in issue which have contradiction. Is it good for AOFI as a standard setting body? Surely not. So we decided that number one, the core Sharia principles will remain in Sharia standards. Number two, accounting standard will be primarily a disclosure and presentation standard and one there is one more reason for that. Because when we go to take you through the 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 accounting treatments with regard to the. Different type of institution, you will see that in most parts of the world that the zakah computation. Uh is only going to be a disclosure. It will not be an adjustment. So again, calling it a measurement and measurement and presentation standard would make it applicable in two, three jurisdictions only. While the presentation and disclosure standard, it will be applicable and it can be applicable around the globe like nearly more than forty plus, nearly forty three regulators in. Thirty plus countries who are adopting our standards, they can all begin benefit of it. While if we make it a primarily computation standard, the benefit will be. To 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 very limited number of countries because they are not asking for zakah. One more issue was that if we put it as a computation standard, would it be like a necessary adjustment in the financial statements? Or not? If it is going to be, if it is going to be a disclosure only with regard to the amount of zakah and amount of zakat present zakat base etcetera. Then even if we call it, even if we call it a general a computation and measurement standard. Is still in most of the cases, it will actually be only a presentation and disclosure standard. So the last thing that was decided that accounting board will be developing guidelines for computation in line with Sharia standard number thirty five. It will be reviewed by the Sharia committee and if necessary by the Sharia board. And those guidelines will be available in addition to SS thirty five and the new FAS. So that a comprehensive guidance is available from AOFI to the to the to the to the market. Uh why guidelines, why not standard? Because accounting board will be issuing it while it will be addressing mainly Sharia issues. So we cannot put it as a Sharia standard and the Sharia standard. Needs further enhancement on the computation side which can be done by the accounting side expertise. So in a one last thing, if there is an amendment in an standard either by the accounting board or the governance board, the status. Of guidelines is less than the status of the standard. So it will be very clear which one has to apply because as of now. If the Sharia standard and accounting standard have have differences, which one shall apply? If both are adopted by your regulator, this is a anomaly situation. While when we put it in the guidelines, it will be always clear that whenever a standard is amended, it will supersede the guidelines to the extent of the amendments. So this issue does not need to be addressed again and again. I'm sorry, I took more time in it. But I believe that this is a very important issue. Even our Sharia committee wanted us. Uh when they reviewed this standard, they wanted us to discuss this issue in detail. And we mentioned that the guidelines will handle the issue and actually. Uh they they asked us to complete the high guidelines project as soon as possible. So Insha Allah, we are starting it shortly. Uh this is a comment, uh this is a comment from Sunni Anikta. Uh when when considering zakah accounting at institution which are not obliged to pay zakah, there shall be some issues to consider regarding tax. For example, in Turkey, there is limits on this kind of expense and cannot deduct from tax base. Very good point. Actually, if it is not. Uh let me explain it again. This is something important, but it's a very important question. And that is the reason that we have with the we have kept this categorization of the. Uh categorization of the of the type of institutions. Isn't confusing to use the term zakah, I said the amount paid as zakah over and above the zakah expense, it will perhaps be misunderstood with zakhatable asset. Uh and uh actually, we will be open to take any comments on that for a suitable wording. But I think I I'll be better able to explain this point when I reach there. So with that, I would prefer to move on now. Thank you very much for this uh this very interactive discussion. And let me move ahead and then we will Insha Allah reach these points. So I will explain them. Objective of the standard is to establish the principles of financial reporting related to zakah attributable to different stakeholders of an Islamic financial institution. If you see the term, we very categorically said, establish the principles of financial reporting at related to zakah attributable. So zakah deductible, zakah payable, we did not use here. We use zakah attributable because there are different type of institutions around the globe. Some of them may have a legal requirement, some not. This we are going to discuss now. Scope. The standard shall apply to an institution with regard to recognition, presentation and disclosure of zakah attributable to relevant stakeholders. The standard does not specifically address the issues related to zakah on certain produce including agriculture produce. Which according to Sharia is due on produce and not on annual basis. In respect of such zakah, an institution shall develop its own accounting policy, shall make necessary disclosures with regard to the reconciliation of computation of zakah. And shall follow the requirements of this standard insofar as practicable. Definitions. Annual zakah base. Is the total net amount subject to zakah at the end of an annual period, maybe but not necessarily coinciding with the financial reporting date of an institution. But does not include the value of agriculture produce or any other produce which is not subject to zakah on an annual basis. Institutions obliged to pay zakah. Now I will be able to answer some of the questions. These are such institutions that are required to pay zakah on net asset pertaining to certain or all relevant stakeholders whereby one or more of the following conditions is armet. One, when the law requires the institution to pay the zakah obligation. For example, Saudi Arabia, Kuwait partially, some other countries. When the institution by virtue of its constitution documents is required to pay zakah obligation. We have some institutions in large Islamic financial institutions. We have some of the institutions who by virtue of their. Statute or by virtue of their articles in memorandum of association are required to pay the zakah obligation. Three, when the general assembly of the shareholders has passed a resolution requiring the institution to pay the zakah obligation. On their behalf, for example, for sure. Or where the contract with certain stakeholders requires the institution to pay the zakah obligation. Now, when we develop this standard, we want all Islamic financial institutions to pay zakah. Because zakah is a most important and integral part of Islamic economic system and we need to ensure that maximum zakah is paid into the system as per requirements of Sharia. But there are different type of institutions who are working in different type of countries. So one 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 rule cannot fit all. So we allowed that there are different type of institutions who may be obliged to pay zakah. Either by law or by constitution document or by general assembly resolution or. With a with a contract to certain stakeholders like for example, the Sukuk contract says that Sukuk that zakah will be paid on that or. The Yuria contract, profit and loss sharing deposit account contract says that the zakah will be paid on that. So this is again, as we said, it can be some or certain or or relevant stakeholders. The old standard was about shareholders only. Here we are talking about certain or all relevant stakeholders. And if you ask us, we want all the institutions to pay zakah on all the monies which are with them. It will significantly improve. The economic situation for the Muslim countries. But as as of now, I would like to say. That that it is it is we it is not. But as, as of now, I would like to say that, that it is, it is, uh, we are, it is not the ideal system and we are accounting standard setting right now and as accounting standard setter, we cannot say that. And we also need to understand that, that some of our Fuqaha, for example, Fuqaha from Hanafi school of thought, they believe that zakah should not be paid on musha or on, on combined funds, rather each one should be paying it individually. So we kept all these options open in this, uh, standard. Now, I, I can see that somebody has raised hand etcetera as well, but if you allow me to complete the definitions, then we, they will take more comments. Institutions not obliged to pay zakah are the institutions other than institutions which are obliged to pay zakah and institutions which are not responsible to pay zakah on behalf of one or certain classes of stakeholders. So for example, there is a bank that is obliged to pay zakah for, for shareholders. According to the law or according to the constitution document. So for the purpose of, for the purpose of zakah on shareholders, it will follow the requirements of this standard as applicable to institutions obliged to pay zakah. And since it is not required to pay zakah on the stakeholders other than shareholders, so for the purpose of stakeholders other than shareholders like Sukuk, like participatory investors etcetera, it will be paying, it will be making disclosures in line with the requirements applicable to institutions not obliged to pay zakah. I, I hope that one of the questions that was there is cleared now. Realizable value is the entity specific value which the institution is able to sell the relevant asset, that is convert the asset in gas. It is different from the fair value because fair value is the market value and the realizable value is the entity specific value at which entity can sell it, uh, even if the market, uh, is, is slightly low or less than that. Relevant stakeholder for zakah purposes include but are includes but not limited to all those who provide capital in different capacities such as shareholders, participatory stakeholders, etcetera. Zakah is a right religious responsibility on a Muslim, Haqum Malum, which becomes due in certain types of wealth and dispersible to specific categories of recipients in respect of the current annual period, subject to different institutions, legal environment, it may be an expense to the institution or an obligation of the individual shareholders or other stakeholders. Zakah asset is the amount paid as zakah over and above the zakah expense recognized in the income statement as well as excess zakah paid through adjustment to equity for the current and prior period. Uh, now, we had a question on zakah asset. So why, why we, what, what the definition is, the definition says that if the zakah expense for a period was less and the zakah paid was more, then in that situation, it will become a zakah asset, that is, but we cannot call it zakah receivable, we considered the term, but from whom it will be receivable? In some situations, uh, like for example, in case of Saudi Arabia, it can be receivable from the DZIT department for zakah income taxes. But, but, but in most situations, for example, last year in the, in the COVID, wake of COVID, it was a recommendation by our Sharia board and lot of, uh, now with some of our scholars of our Sharia board and lot of central Sharia boards in different countries and of our governance board, our governance board recommended that, that zakah may be paid in advance, which is allowed by Sharia. So if there was a pandemic situation and zakah was paid by the institution in advance, what will happen? Where you will show it? You cannot show it as a receivable, uh, for, for the purpose of zakah, zakah as a legal liability with department of zakah and income taxes. If they have raised a demand for zakah which is more than the actual expense, then it can be a receivable as well. But, but for other situations, it is not a receivable because you just paid it in advance. So we can call it zakah advance, advance zakah, we can call it zakah asset. Uh, the, the term used in tax is not advanced tax, rather it is used as, as, uh, as, uh, as, uh, as tax asset. So that's why we use the term zakah asset. Uh, again, if we use the term advance, there will be additional terms as well like prepaid. What will be the difference between advance and prepaid? That advance can be reverted back to you and prepaid cannot be reverted back to you in the classical accounting literature. So the terms, there can be different terms, we take your note that this, if, if there is a risk of confusion, we can call it prepaid zakat or we can call it advanced zakat, we can call it something like that. So we just take a note of your comment here, but I just wanted to explain what does it actually mean. Zakhatable assets are those assets that are subject to zakah in line with the Sharia requirements on an annual basis. Which are, which are to be part of disclosure in this standard. Zakah liability is the unpaid amount of current and prior years zakah due and zakah rate is the rate applied to zakah base in order to calculate zakah. So these are the definitions. So let's try to take comments on the, on the, on the, on the, on the, uh, on the definitions now. So do we have any questions right now?
Yes, sir, we have a few. Uh, but only one of them pertains to definition.
Okay, let me go step by, uh, step by step. Uh, I think that this one, this question is, uh, is, is, is now, is now partially clear, but let me clarify now because now we have discussed the definition. Now, when we go to the treatments, uh, the remaining part of the question will be clear. So don't delete the first question because the remaining part of the question is, is going to appear in the treatments. Uh, comment on the, uh, comment from brother Abdul Kader Noor. Uh, for me, it is to be classified, the record and presentation of zakah, those for the bank and those for on behalf of the customers. Uh, yes, that is, that is correct. Your comment is correct. Actually, we are doing it for both. Uh, we have a comment from, uh, Nur, Nurul Kabir, Assalamualaikum, Waalaikumsalam. In a country where there is no obligatory zakal law for IFIs, but according to the memorandum, the IFIs pay zakah, they don't get tax exemption against pay zakah, how it can be solved? Uh, this is the same comment like our brother from Turkey. So, uh, so how it will be solved from the treatment, I will mention, uh, when, when we reach the treatment. Uh, let me take you to the treatment now. Let me handle this question because we are receiving this question more than once. So let me try to take this question first. Now, we are saying that in recognition of zakah due, an institution obliged to pay zakah by law or by virtue of its constitution documents shall recognize current zakah expense in its financial statement in line with the, in line with the requirements of paragraph six. Current zakah expense or reversal thereof of the current and prior period shall be recognized as expense and included in profit and loss for the period unless paragraph seven applies. Zakah expense or reversal thereof from a transaction or related balance which is recognized in the same or a different period outside profit or loss, either in other comprehensive income or directly in equity shall be included in the relevant statement. So these two type of institutions who by law or by constitution documents are required to pay zakah will be doing it. In those countries where they are required to pay zakah by law, in most situations, either they will be either exempt from income tax or their zakah will be either as a deduction from the income tax amount or it will be, uh, considered a admissible expense, eligible expense for the purpose of computation of taxation. Where it is a constitution document requirement, then in most countries, if the law does not require it, then it will be considered as an inadmissible expense. Uh, this is not uncommon in a large number of countries where zakah related expenses, zakah expenses are considered ineligible or like donations are considered ineligible. But let me take you to the another requirement of tax laws in most parts of the world. In most parts of the world, there are eligible tax, tax, uh, there are eligible tax exemptions for the donations to specific institutions. And this is common in, in a lot of countries where the specific charities or specific NGOs or hospitals or other initiatives are allowed by law to be admissible expense for tax, tax purposes or a rebate is given on that. Uh, in those situation, these institutions may opt to pay, uh, preferably to, to the approved charities and approved NGOs to get the tax exemption and tax benefit or tax rebate. However, if it is not the situation, then from the tax purpose, this will be considered as an inadmissible expense and from the tax accounting purpose, it will be considered as a permanent difference, not a temporary difference, it will be a permanent difference between the, uh, between the taxation reconciliation amounts. The next question. Okay, when, when not including calculating method in the standard, this may create confusion in countries adopting only accounting standard and not the Sharia standard. Uh, actually, as, as brother Rizwan initially mentioned, we issue the standards as a, as a, as a, as a, as a, as a complementing set. Means that they complement each other. Uh, when the, when the standard, when you read the standards, our all new standards, in the beginning, there is a box. That box clearly says that it is to be read with that standard. It means that, that even if the Sharia standard is not adopted in your country, since this standard is referring to that requirement, so it means that that requirement by virtue of adoption of this standard becomes a requirement of the, of the standard. This is, uh, this is a common practice in lot of laws and regulations and standards around the globe. For example, some of our governance standards refer to some requirements given in, uh, in IOSCO or OECD or IFSB standards. It does not mean that when we do that, it means that those are not applicable. Rather, giving a reference in the accounting standard or the governance standard makes that requirement which is referred to a part of this standard for the purpose of implementation. This is an understood issue, so it's not a confusion thing. However, as I mentioned, shortly we will be coming up with guidelines, so it will be sorting out that, that issue as well. How about zakah income, zakah income from gross salary or net salary? Uh, this question is not clear to me, so, so, uh, so I will actually try to, uh, try to, try to explain how zakah income or zakhatable income is worked, worked out on the different type, uh, like, uh, different type, uh, of institutions. Uh, next question from Moidin Adradin Khan. Sorry, Adinli, my apologies. For an organization whose owners are Muslims and non-Muslims, is the organization permitted to pay zakah on the total profit or the financial year? Uh, zakah is not applicable on the total profit, zakah is applicable on the base. And those who are not subj, or not subject to zakah, they will not be paying. However, however, uh, it, it depends on the, on the law and it depends on the constitution documents. Normally, in, in, non-Muslims are exempted and for that purpose, uh, like in Saudi Arabia, uh, this is one, a common example that Muslims are subject to zakah while non-Muslims are subject to income tax. So this is one example, so this will be subject to the law of the respective country. In those countries where it is required by law, the law will be defining this part as well. Uh, so again, from our perspective, uh, the main thing is presentation and disclosure and computation of zakah base and disclosing that. Uh, based on the benefits of zakah, which, which should prioritize the poor and not the rich, which computation method would be more beneficial, accounting module or Sharia module? Actually, brother, brother Sheikh Mohammed Khan, actually, uh, actually, the both of them had, end up with the same result. Net invested fund method versus the, versus the, versus the net asset method and whatever requirements are there in the Sharia standard versus what is in the accounting standard, they end up with the same computation actually. Brother Mohammed Hadid, Hadid Jaja. In my book, I criticize and prove the conventional accounting is illogical one from the mathematical point of view. So I absolutely rejected the conventional accounting and proposed the substitution with the thinking above. What's your comment? Uh, brother Mohammed, I highly appreciate your efforts. Uh, we as AOFI are trying to do our level best on, 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 on doing the concepts of Islamic accounting, but we have our limitations because we are living in this world, we highly appreciate your efforts and may Allah bless you. Uh, as of now, uh, the subject of the topic will not be here, but as I mentioned, uh, asking for zakah base actually means that we are asking the institutions to provide the accounting requirements that would be there if the zakah base, base accounting was followed. Uh, we, it, it, again saying, uh, accounting, uh, again, uh, some of the treatments may be illogical and some may not be illogical. Uh, there are different standpoints on that. At times, there are two different treatments. The AOFI Accounting Board or International Accounting Standard Board or Financial Accounting Standard Board of US, they all, all these boards, all these committees and boards, they all have to find out the best suitable select, uh, solution that they are able to find out by collective wisdom. This is our approach. Uh, we highly appreciate your effort, but, uh, to be honest, uh, as of now, we believe that, uh, we, we, we are using, uh, an accounting, accounting system which is, which is, uh, which is conventional system with suitable amendments to ensure that Sharia compliance is not compromised in any manner. Uh, the Sharia prohibitions are not taken into account for, for those purpose. So we ensure that and we are trying to do our part. Uh, further, further discussion on this we can have later on offline. In the event where institution not obliged to pay zakah, paying partial of zakah amount, do the shareholder need to pay the remaining of full zakah amount? Uh, it's a good question. Uh, zakah based computation will ensure, uh, will ensure that, uh, that, uh, uh, will ensure that the full amount of zakah payable is identified. If because of the legal requirements or because of any other things zakah paid is less than this, then the shareholder has to pay the difference amount of the proportionate difference amount related to them. Uh, just I request my team, don't delete while I'm answering, with all the questions go up and down because of that. Once I answer all of them, whichever I have answered, you can delete them please. Otherwise, actually, I miss out, I miss the questions. Okay, so the next one is. How we will maintain any educational trust organization in terms of financial reporting of zakah or Islamic social financing? Uh, we, we, we have, uh, we have not put in, in the accounting scope for this one, this one is the accounting for Islamic financial institutions. Uh, we are considering initially, uh, somebody deleted the question? Or I just? I think the question was deleted by somebody, please. Request, don't delete the questions unless I answer all the, all the questions, then delete all of them together, please.
Uh, sir, I'm just putting them in the answered section. Uh, I've not yet deleted them.
But it's, it's still like putting them in answer, don't do it right now because actually I missed one part of it. Uh, I, I missed one part of the question. Uh, the question primarily, the second part of the question that is, uh, what we are doing right now is this. On the financial reporting for zakah or Islamic social financing, we started our projects with, with WAFF. So for WAFF, we have developed our standard already and it is issued now. Uh, we are, we are starting a governance standard for Islamic zakah institutions, which means that uh, those zakah institutions, uh, like including charities and, uh, other type of institutions who obtain and collect and use zakah. We are, we are developing the first, the governance standard for them. I can, I can, and can, I can understand that in a, in a, at a later stage, we will be, we will be eventually doing a accounting standard for them as well. So, but as of now, uh, Sister Farah, this is, uh, not in the pipeline right now. Uh, the governance one is in the pipeline now. Accounting, we understand we might need to do, but in accounting, we have very large agenda of standards already on our plate. So we actually, uh, have not picked up this project, but we believe that in future it will be needed. Uh, in some countries, you get a tax relief if you donate to a worthy cause. Does zakah computation take into consideration of this and how it can, and how can, uh, how can one paying zakah benefit? I think I partially answered this thing already. It will not be part of zakah computation, but when you pay, to whom you are paying, this is the question and how you pay is the question. I don't agree that zakah is recognized as an expense in case some of the company shareholders are non-Muslim, so this expense will affect the amount of net income, which is also the right of non-Muslim shareholders, meaning that non-Muslim also bear the zakah expense. In my opinion, zakah paid by institution is treated the same as dividends, not expense. At the time of paying zakah, the asset is calculated, the zakah must be paid by the shareholders. Okay, uh, I actually, I, actually, I personally disagree with you on one ground, but again, uh, what's our standard provide these options, all these options are provided by our standards. So let me, let me first mention that we did not put it as the only case. We said when it is required by law, you do it. In those countries where it is required by law, it is mentioned and the law as to how to handle for the non-Muslims. Secondly, there is a situation where you have the constitution document saying that. Even in those ones, I believe that the constitution document handles that. Even in those ones, I believe that the constitution document handles that one, so this is an expense. Uh, but it, it goes like, like this. Now, there is one significant issue and I believe that because of that significant issue, the institutions must pay zakat. Not only on this one, but all of it. And if there is a, if there is a, there is a adjustment needed for non-Muslims, that can be done as a. Adjustment to the computation, why I am saying this one? Because. The, the new concept of artificial juristic person was not there in the earlier times. Even at that time, the zakah on musha, musha or on the combined assets. Was, was preferred by three of the schools of thought out of four. It is not handling the issue of the non-Muslims right now, but we need to understand what we are thinking here. We, we allowed artificial juristic person and we said that the artificial juristic person will be, will be, uh, will be, uh. Will be eligible to like, you know, to sue and to be sued and will be eligible to do transactions and do the contracts and everything. And while it was the requirement of zak, paying of zakah of, on musha by three of the schools of thoughts out of four. Is still, we have not made it mandatory on this part. Again, the, our Sharia board does not require it mandatory because Fauqaha have a difference of opinion. But considering this thing, we need to understand that zakah. Payment by institutions is very important for the revival of Islamic economic system. It is very important to ensure that the institutionalized zakah is paid and it is distributed in the right manner. So can, uh, I do not want to go further for this debate because it is a debate on the Sharia side and of the, on the, on the conceptual economic side. But in a nutshell, I would say that whatever is required by law to be paid by zakah or whatever is required by the constitution documents. Again, why constitution documents, try to understand, when the constitution documents of an entity are approved by the. Uh, by the, by the, by the, by the, by the corporate authorities or the authorities of that country. Legal authorities and corporate authorities and regulators of that country, they become a part of law for the purpose of that entity itself. So it means that it is also equivalent to law for you. Now, how to handle the non-Muslim issue? For sure, we understand that non-Muslim issue is there and we understand that different laws, like as I mentioned about Saudi Arabia, they handle it separately. But, uh, putting as an expense, if it is a legal requirement, is actually a requirement of accounting, you cannot deny that. This might be your preference that they should be paid by stakeholders. And I can tell you, there are people who say that even the charity amount should be paid by the shareholders, not by the, not by the institution. Which results in that the institution just informs the shareholder amount about, about the amount of charity and end up using the money. So this is something that we need to understand, that zakah is important for purification of the funds. And it is equally important at the institution level. Uh, we. Brother Mohammed, Hadid, Hadid Jaja. Uh, you have a comment on zakar based on the net asset method only, the statement is not in line with Al, so, Al Quran Surah, uh, Al Isra, verse thirty six. And do not follow something you don't know because of hearing sight and conscience, they will be held accountable. Uh, I, I, I absolutely don't feel that it is against that. Actually, I believe that, I believe that this is the best and the most fair form of disclosure. Uh, net invested fund method actually don't go for detailed disclosure for each of the item which is subject to zakah or not. While this one actually identifies each, the whole of the balance sheet. Out of which, which items are subject to zakah and which are not subject to zakah. Regarding zakah, if zakah rate is the next question, brother, uh, our Sharia standard says that if the zakah is paid on the. On the, uh, on the basis of, uh, because the, the actual zakah is based on Hijri and lunar calendar. Uh, so, so actually, uh, actually two point five percent zakah or one forty, one of the, one part of, one fortieth part of zakah. Is actually applicable, uh, is actually applicable on, on a lunar calendar basis. That is, that is nearly ten or eleven days less than the Gregorian calendar. So, so, uh, so if the Gregorian calendar is used, uh, or the solar calendar is used. In that situation, uh, the zakah rate is slightly changed considering the additional number of days. And that's why we have asked for the disclosure, this is in line with the Sharia standard. Uh, point number seven, where zakar reversal is recognized in equity, uh, I, I'll, I'll come to that shortly, I'll explain that. There are two people asking the same, uh, there is one question and then zakatibal assets are many, so it may not be applied to statement. Zakah base are based on net asset method only, what's your opinion? Uh, uh, I think my, uh, with, when we discuss the zakah base, zakah base statement. Then you can pay, make your comment brother again, then we can understand it better. Uh, brother Mohammed Rabiul Yatim. Uh, could you explain how effective method from zakah can improve and what welfare of you, of people of the world, thank you. Uh, to be honest, this is not a subject of accounting, it's a subject of governance and actually we are going to develop a standard on the governance side, Insha Allah. Uh, that will be helping on this ground. Uh, treasury share is an asset for, is, is asset for zakah. Uh, this is, uh, I think, I think, uh, Sharia standard. Um, uh, because this is, this is, uh, you don't put zakah on the equity. So this is a deduction from equity, so, so the equity and, and deduction from equity is reduced. And you come up for a different equity for zakah based purposes, so I'll, I'll show you the computation as to how the zakah base is computed. Zakah asset does not fulfill the definition of an asset, uh, in, in this context, it may be better to use the term advanced zakah. Uh, we will take your comment, uh, it can be advanced zakah, prepaid zakah, but we use the term zakah asset because, uh, and I, uh, in I F R S also. They use the term tax asset, not advanced tax or prepaid tax, because there can be advanced, there can be prepaid. How long, uh, actually, actually those who generally say advanced zakah, actually this might be wrong in most of the situation, advance. According to the, according to the, uh, to the classical accounting literature. Uh, advance means that there is something that can be refunded, in case of zakah, it may not be refunded. So, so is advanced zakah can be possible only in case of, in case of, uh, for example, D Z I T. Uh, where it has, where it may be refunded if they have made a higher claim and then the assessment changes. And you end up paying less, so in that situation you can be refunded. But otherwise prepaid zakah might be, might be the right term because prepayment is not refundable. So again, I do not want to go in this detail, we take a note of your comment, uh, brother or sister, because it's anonymous. And we take it, we'll take it to the working group, Insha Allah. How long muraba receivable subject to zakah and how it is calculated? Uh, how, uh, this is one of the debatable issues even in our Sharia standard. And, uh, and I would like to, like, uh, I would like to, like, mention that. Uh, right now, we are not putting the computation guidance, computation guidance will be shortly coming. In line with Sharia standard, there are two different views on this one, our view however is that receivable is subject to zakah. Uh, now there is one issue and I feel very sorry because actually we, we started at, uh, at nine fifty. We started the public hearing part at nine fifty and we have completed one hour by now. And there is ten minutes left in the normal, uh, normal one, uh, normal time allocated. So what I will do, if with your permission, I'll stop taking questions now. And in next five to seven minutes, I'll try to summarize, in next ten minutes, I'll summarize what the standard is. And some of the comments are received already, so we will be taking note of them. And if you guys are available, I am available to, to take extra time. Like after, after, after completing the normal time, I'll be, I'll make myself available to answer all the questions which are there on the screen. Uh, but if you allow me, I would prefer to complete this, this part. Uh, zakatibal assets, uh, sorry, the definitions we have done, now there was one comment about point number seven as well, because now, now what happens? Actually, uh, this seven is important because there can be some of the, uh, some of the assets. Whose, whose gain or loss is not coming to income statement or the primary gain or loss is not coming to income statement. For example, I have Sukuk and those Sukuk are subject to, uh, fair value through, uh, through other comprehensive income. Now, now if I have, I'm not bringing their gains in the income statement. It means that if I put the expense in the income statement, it will not be matching. So what we said, in line with the tax accounting treatments as well. That if there is a zakah expense or if there is a reversal of that because of computation of, of changes. It, it will be taken to the respective, uh, uh, respective segment. That is, if it relates to income statement, it goes to income statement. If it relates to a statement of comprehensive, other comprehensive income or directly in equity, anything taken directly in equity, it will be taken to that. Recognition of zakah is an adjustment to equity, now the first type was where it was a legal requirement. Where there is not a legal requirement, but still the institution is required to be paid either by virtue of the contract. Or by virtue of the resolution of the General Assembly, the recognition of zakah will be taken as an adjustment to equity. When zakah is not required to be paid by law or by virtue of constitution documents and where the institution is considered as an agent to pay zakah on behalf of stakeholders. Any amount paid in zakah, in respect of zakah shall be adjusted with the equity of the relevant stakeholders. In case of insufficient distributable reserves available in equity to meet the relevant stakeholders zakah obligation. The amount paid by the institution shall be recorded as receivable from respective stakeholders. So this is the situation where zakah is paid by requirement of, uh, uh, resolution or contract. Uh, but the, but here, it is, the institution becomes the agent. And once it becomes the agent in this capacity, it is paid out of the respective equity. So the institution takes out it from the equity like, like dividend. So, like, like dividend from shareholders or like distribution to investment account holders, et cetera. So it is taken out from there and it is to be accounted for like that. Recognition of zakah liability, either it is taken out from there or taken out for as an expense or taken out from the other comprehensive income. Or taken out directly from equity of the respective stakeholder. Current zakah obligation in all the situations shall be, wherever it is required to be paid. In those institutions, it is not required to be paid and in those institutions where it is required to be paid for some stakeholders only. Then those situation, the amount which is required to be paid shall be recognized as a liability in the statement of financial position of the institution. If the amount already paid in respect of current and the prior periods zakah obligation exceeds the amount due for those periods, the access shall be recognized and said. In the statement of financial position of the institution, this is what we have already discussed, so I will not explain further. Now it's the part two, institutions not obliged to pay zakah. In case where the institution is neither obliged to pay zakah nor asked to act as the agent. The institution shall disclose the zakah base and amount of zakah per share unit for certain or all relevant participative stakeholders for the current year. So they will just make that disclosure. In addition to general presentation requirement, the method used for determining zakah base item which are included in this bay and recon, base and reconciliation thereof. Appendix B, I'll just take you through that. The relevant authorities guidance, for example, A U F I Sharia standard thirty five, regulatory requirements, guidance from institution Sharia board use for determining such method. Shall also be disclosed, including the rulings of Sharia board of the institution on the issues related to zakah that are not included in this standard. Zakah per share and per unit base for each pool or category of investment, whether it's paid by the institution or otherwise. A reconciliation between zakah liability and expense presented in the consolidated financial statements. And those presented in the subsidies standalone or separate financial statements, this is an important point. Because the consolidated zakah is to be paid on individual financial statements. So when you consolidate, maybe some of the consolidation adjustments would change the figures. So it will be covered in the reconciliation, but the figures will not be changed. Actual figures will be based on the standalone financial statements, not based on the consolidated financial statements. A statement as to whether or not the institution collects and pays zakat on behalf of participative stakeholders on other accounts, this is to be disclosed. In circumstances where zakah paid to a person charitable institution is more than five percent of total zakah payable, the nature of such payment and details of the recipient. Shall be disclosed, the difference between the amount of zakah is required by law and zakah determined voluntarily in requirement. With, in line with requirements of A U F I S S thirty five and relevant guidance if any. Uh, at times this happens that zakah, zakah collecting authorities by government have their own rules. And the amount which is voluntary calculated is at times diff- different. The amount of zakah that is due from the equity of participative stakeholders, the amount of zakah allocated or paid or for on behalf of certain or all stakeholders. Where the institution has agriculture produced, the accounting policy for determining zakah base of such produce along with the amount of zakah due on the produce. The zakah dues from the institution to the zakah fund as well as amounts of zakah received. From other sources of fund shall be presented in accordance with A U F I F S one. Any dispute between the institution and relevant zakah authorities, including the amount and period to which dispute belongs with reasons of such dispute. This applies in those countries where the government authorities collect zakah. Zakah fund, where the institution has established its zakah liability, the same with corresponding asset shall be transferred to a zakah fund immediately. Zakah fund shall be treated distinct and separate from the institution, similar to assets under management. Such asset shall not meet the definition of asset of the institution and hence shall not be available to the institution even in case of bankruptcy. Where zakah fund is invested, it will be in accordance with your policy to be duly approved by the institution Sharia Supervisory Board, developed in line with. Sharia principles and rules particularly A U F I S S thirty five. The illustrative disclosure in respect of sources and uses of zakah fund is attached as appendix C. Standard will become applicable on one January twenty twenty two. Earlier adoption is implemented, it will supersede FAS nine zakah. Now coming to illustrative disclosure of the zakah base. So if you see and it will respond to a lot of answer questions, like for example, we, the first asset is cash and cash balance equivalents. Basis of valuation for accounting purpose illustrative only, it can be changed, so it will be either historical cost or fair value, some cash equivalents can be at fair value. Accounting carrying value is X amount, that is the balance sheet amount that is going into balance sheet. Valuation for the purpose of zakah will be relizable value, we will be putting that value here for the purpose of zakah. Receivables, accounting value will be normally par value less amortized deferred profit net of allowance for credit losses. Uh, while basis of valuation for zakah purpose will be par value net of allowances for credit losses, so the deferred profits. Which are adjusted, which are shown as a deduction from, from, from muraba receivables will not be received. And if you see here, we have not distinguished, in our preferred treatment, we have not distinguished the short term versus long term. Although there are some confusions with regard to short term and long term and there are some ulama who have a view that long term should not be included. But we believe that as it reflects are receivable and it should be considered as subject to zakah and it, it is, it is not considered bad. Net of allowances for credit losses means that whatever is considered bad, you, you, you net it off. Mudarba financing, if zakah not being paid by the venture directly, so on mudarba, there can be one approach that the venture pays zakah. But normally the venture will not pay zakah, so the accounting purpose value will be historical cost less and distributed losses, net of allowances for impairment. While for the purpose of valuation, it will be relizable asset or relizable asset of net asset subject to zakah in the murad, mudarba ventures which is preferred. So for example, in the mudarba asset, for mudarba financing, our main capital is used like eighty percent to the eighty percent extent. For procurement of plant and machinery which are not subject to zakah. So it means that you need to identify the rel- relizable value of net assets which are subject to zakah, it is the preferred treatment. But if further details are not available, then you can directly take the relizable value. Musharka financing, uh, if, say, more or less same treatment. Salam receivable will be at par value, stasna receivable will be at par value. Assets for trading will be at realizable value, inventories will be at net realizable value, marketable securities will be at fair value. Real estate for sale will be for at fair value, real estate for rent or real estate for own use will not be subject to zakah. As per our standards, uh, others, uh, generally will be at realizable value. On the liabilities, current accounts will be taken at book value, payables due to be paid during the next financial period will be at book value. Other liabilities due to be paid will be at book value, here this, during the next financial period is again one of the areas. Which is, uh, which is debatable and, uh, we, 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 we know that there are Sharia issues in that. Some of our Sharia standard as of now apparently allows for twelve months only, like, uh, but the preferred treatment may be. That all of it can be adjusted, but the, unless, unless the liabilities are against the assets procured which are not subject to zakah. So normally the long term liability should also be here for, on a full basis, but it is, uh, there is a difference in the Sharia standard. And now when you calculate this whole zakah base, now you come to the zakah base. And then you compute, this, this comes as total amount of zakah base, then you compute zakah at two point five percent in case of lunar and the two point. And then you compute this, this comes as total amount of zakah base, then you compute zakah at two point five percent in case of lunar and the two point five nine or whatever percentages. In case of solar calendar, other zakah if any, if it is on, it's a no shuro or nis shuro or, or on homes basis. It will be added, then total zakah will be there. Then we will identify zakah attributable to shareholders, non-controlling interest. And different classes of quasi-equity and participatory stakeholders, this is also one of the difference from the previous standard. Because the previous standard was not computing it on the quasi-equity holder, so they were included. Uh they were disclosed, uh they were delete, uh they were like, you know, uh, uh, the figure was the, um, uh included in the liabilities. So the net zakah base was being calculated without them, even in the net investment method, they were not included. So we have now included them and the zakah attributable to them also needs to be included. Now this disclosure, this is disclosure of reconciliation of zakah. It does not mean that you end up paying it, it means that you disclose it. If it is required by law or by constitution document or by resolution, you will pay according to the requirements of the paragraphs we have mentioned already. And remaining situations, you will not pay for it. Now this is the illustrative one. Uh for the sources and uses of zakah fund, so this was earlier part of FAS one, now we have brought in here. And it will be in the new FAS one, it will not be a primary statement, rather it will be part of the notes in line with this, uh this disclosure requirement. So what are the sources of fund and what are the uses of fund? Right now we have put five, but, but we will be actually putting all the eight sources as per Sharia, this was decided by the Sharia committee. Uh this comment we received from Sharia committee, so we will be incorporating it. And further details about like for example, five percent or more, et cetera, needs to be disclosed. Uh with that, our body text of the standard and the two main appendices are done, basis of conclusion, we don't need to go for now. But now the time is over already. Uh now let me ask the audience whether they want us to continue for at least twenty more minutes to. Uh to be able to answer the questions that we have received already.
I think brother Omar, we can continue.
I, I hope I can still see a large number of people continuing, so I think that we should be continuing, I'll try to keep it like as, as short as possible now. Uh so with that, I'm coming back to the questions where we left them.
Uh there are couple of hands raised as well.
Okay, so let's first take, take the questions by those who want to, who want to, uh, to, to, to ask like on, online, so let's ask them. Please one by one, and allow them.
Russell, Huda, Hussain, would you like to ask? Your question? Doctor Muhammad Umar Fason? Would you like to ask your question by voice?
Doctor Ansari, if you may allow me to, to, to ask my question.
Please, please, go ahead.
Could I? Yes, okay. Uh one of the things that you said, uh I mean as someone said, it shouldn't be defined as asset. And then you said, yeah, perhaps you use a term, so I think what you meant was deferred. Deferred tax asset, uh like what we use for taxation, so perhaps it should be a deferred zakat asset. Uh the issue of having paid more than what you're, you should pay, that's one. The second thing is that, uh, when you see an asset.
Answer, if you allow me to answer this one, let's take one by one please. So the first one is, uh if we compute deferred zakah, it will be different. Uh and we decided not to compute deferred zakah. We, it is not deferred zakah, in the taxation, uh in the tax also, tax asset and deferred tax asset are two different things. So the effort means that the accounting base of something is different. Uh like for example, I can give you one example that according to some fakaha, uh the receivables, uh which are long term, you don't need to pay zakah on them now. Okay, so that may be considered as deferred zakah. Because this is something that you will be actually paying when you actually end up paying, so it will be deferred zakah liability on that. This is just one example, the other way around would be the liability, the liability which is. Which you, which is like long term liability and you, but, but in that situation, normally the view is that you need to end up paying for one time only. While, while some scholars say that you need to pay on, on every year, uh the same like in the adjustment amount. So the deferred tax as deferred zakah asset or deferred, deferred, deferred liability for zakah. We considered those concepts and we consciously decided that it will be too complicated and it is actually not happening in most of the normal situations. It is happening only in those situation where we have a difference in fakaha rules, so that's why we decided not to put it in. Why, what we are saying, what we are saying is not deferred, it is actually prepaid or advanced. But in line with IFRS, we use the term tax asset, uh tax asset, we use, we use the term zakah asset. But if we receive more comments in other public hearings as well, we will consider changing the word, we will take, anyway, we will take this comment to the board. And the working group, but deferred is something different, uh kindly do not confuse deferred with the advance.
Okay, okay, that's, that's very good, uh thank you very much. But I think when you want to term it as a zakah asset. We must actually make sure that it aligns with the conceptual framework that AIOF has issued. So what is the definition of an asset there? And if you're using the term asset here, does it align with that definition? So that, that is my other concern.
Yeah, and yes, we, while we were working, we considered it, it was aligned with AUFI and it was aligned with IFRS framework, both, it is in line with the definition. Uh it is actually a something, a resource whose economic benefits will flow to you later, means that you end up paying less zakah next year.
Okay, okay. And, and, and also I am not so clear when you answered the question, uh of one of the participant. When he said it should be an appropriation and not an expense, because he said if you treat it as an expense, it's gonna be less for the dividends. To the shareholders, so I'm not so clear on that, your answer to that, can you make it clear?
Let me clarify it again, if the law or constitution documents require it to be paid, it is eligible as an expense of the entity and it will be considered as an expense. The law or the constitution documents will handle the issue of non-Muslims, okay? So they, so whatever is there, it will be done by the law or the constitution documents, it will be an expense in that situation. If it is not required by law or by the constitution documents, it is by, it is by a, a resolution of General Assembly or by the contract of the, of the participants. In that situation, it will be, the entity will be considered as an agent, the institution becomes an agent for zakah purpose. So it will be taking it out of the equity of the respective party, it will not be taking it out directly. Uh from the expense, from the expenses or the income statement. So in those situations, it will go in the appropriation, uh through the equity or through other comprehensive income or the whatever situation is normally directly through the equity. Of the respective stakeholder. So these are two different situations, one when required by law as an expense. When not required by law, doing as an agent, taken as appropriation from the respective equity. And third situation, that non-Muslims, respective laws will define where, what to do in that situation and the expense, et cetera, will be accounted for according to the same.
Uh brother Omar, there's a question by brother Hassan Ali, he would like to ask by voice.
Please, go ahead.
Uh regarding to liability zakat, uh possession zakat. What about of the visitor account? This we discount, uh all amount for the visitor account from pool of asset of zakat. Or, uh, period of one year only.
Okay, uh, uh as per our zakah based computation, this, this issue we will handle, this issue we will handle in the guidelines, Insha Allah we will handle in detail. But on the zakah, zakah statement right now, what we have asked is the accounting value versus zakah base and we have asked disclosure for the zakah related policies and the Sharia board rulings, et cetera. So this issue, if because it's not the computation standard itself, so we did not address this issue for now, we just asked for a disclosure. That what value you use for accounting and what value you use for the zakah purpose. We did not say as to how calculate the value for zakah purpose. So these are just examples provided in this one and we have just, we have just given an idea as to how it needs to be disclosed. Otherwise, uh otherwise what, what we are saying, that computation is to be done as per Sharia standard thirty five. And detailed guidelines we are going to issue shortly, Insha Allah.
Sure, uh another question, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Not control at the rest, I think this line, uh should be, but included liability of zakat.
Uh which one, which one, which paragraph you're talking brother?
Non-controlling interest. This items.
Non-controlling interest, uh no, 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 no. Why we are saying it, for example, for example, we, as I mentioned that zakah is computed on the, in the standalone financial statement. So for example, I am the parent bank and I have a subsidiary bank, the subsidiary bank has stakeholders. So the zakah is calculated for the subsidiary bank and they will, subsidiary bank will make all this disclosure. So there, there is no non-controlling interest, but like seventy five percent ownership is with the bank, with the main parent bank. And twenty five percent is with minority interest or non-controlling interest. So what happens that when I do the consolidation part, I will have to show that this twenty five percent related zakah is actually related to, to, to non-controlling interest, okay?
Okay, I, I, I am agree with you, stand controlling interest, it should be cut from, uh bowl of zakat, but this, uh. Uh the position of items, I think it should be removed to in liability, not the.
According to IFRS, according to IFRS and according to AUFI, both, according to both, a non-controlling interest is a type of equity, not a type of liability.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, brother, thank you very much.
There's a, there's a question by, um, by our panelist, Mr. Rayani Muhammad.
Salaam alaikum, Mr. Omar.
Alaiqum.
Uh I have two question to ask you, and number one, where we got to your appendix number C area. I think you have shown appendix C on the, uh yeah, this, this particular appendix. Uh in before this, this particular uh statement is required and FS number one, right? Because it's also one of the mandatory part of statement to be prepared according to AUFI. But since this also now included in the, in the appendix C now, is it mean that, that FS number one also will be revised?
Uh FAS one revised exposure draft is already issued. Earlier, the statement of zakah and charity was a combined statement and was considered to be a primary statement, like balance sheet. We, we considered different aspects of that and we decided that number one zakah fund and charity fund should be kept separate, so it should not be combined in one statement, it should be kept in two different statements. Number one, number two, it's a mandatory disclosure, we are not saying that disclosure cannot be, can be avoided. But this is not the primary funds of the institution. These are ones, as soon as zakah is computed and transferred, it is no more institution's fund, so it should not be a primary statement. Rather, it should be part of the notes, that's what we have decided. And FAS one, FAS revised FAS one exposure draft has already been issued and we are conducting public hearings on that one as well.
Okay, I have another question, Mr. Omar, we recut to the zakah competition. I think you have mentioned that that should be part of the FS number thirty five on Sharia standards, okay? But I'm still in the opinion that that part should still be included in this particular accounting standard. Because when we talk about accounting process in the conceptual framework, we talk about the recognition, measurement, presentation and disclosure. And the zakat measurement also one of the important part in that accounting. So I think, I mean, it, it could based on this notes on appendix B, you have to.
Let me ask question, let me ask your question, if I put the requirement, can I put it as a mandatory expense for all the Islamic financial institutions around the globe? Can I put a, I believe, can I put, if I, if I put the measurement, if I put the measurement. Then would, when we say the measurement in accounting standards means that you, you need to measure the liability and the relevant expense and you need to put in the financial statements. Can I put that liability in the financial statements for, for IFIs around the globe?
Uh I'm referring to the zakah competition, competition, Mr. Omar, so we are talking about.
My, my point is to try to understand, when we say accounting standards include the measurement and recognition part, okay, we agree. But the question is, can, do I have authority around the globe Islamic financial institutions. Under this standard would be required to record the liability? It's not possible, recording the liability we cannot force. Because different countries, different non-Muslim jurisdictions, Muslim jurisdictions, uh those countries. Uh majority of the Muslim countries still do not have a system of collecting zakah from the Islamic financial institutions or the corporate entities. So we need to understand this thing very clearly, that even if I want to call it measurement, measurement means that the liability has to be measured and accorded. Now the problem is that liability I cannot record, I can record only in case where there is a legal requirement and there is a handful of countries for that. Like Saudi is there, but Saudi doesn't adopt our accounting standards as of now. You got my point?
Yeah, I got your point, yeah.
Yeah, so actually even if I, even if I want to put it, I will call it computation guidance, I cannot call it measurement. Because measurement means that the liability is to be measured and recognized. So that's why we will be putting it in the, in the guidance. Uh I, I can now see more and more people are asking for the application guidance, so maybe. We will try to finalize the guidance, application guidance and this standard together, so this right now we are conducting public hearings on this one. But maybe, uh we will speed up the process on the, uh application guidance part, but again, it will be application guidance. It will not be the measurement requirement, measurement requirement means that we, and all standards we have in recognition and measurement requirements. Which means that you need to record it, which we cannot force in case of zakah, so still it will be application guidance, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Omar.
My pleasure, uh anybody else on the voice, uh if before I take questions on the chat window?
There are few, um, there are few unless you want to go to question answer and then come back to what's.
Okay, let me first complete the questions on the, on the, uh, on the Q and A window. Is an Islamic bank obliged to pay zakah on profit of vakala mudarba deposit from its customers with the vakala, not obliged, in most parts of the world not obliged. We are just right now, we are saying it must be disclosed. If the contract says that it was obliged, in that situation, it will be deducted and paid as an agent and it will be shown as a deduction from that, from the equity of the. Uh quasi-equity of the participant accounts. Is it possible to, good in, rather Afra the Arfin. Is it possible to give information on AUFI website, especially in a standard that side that is standards are interrelated to each other and must understand as a whole comprehensive? Uh yes, actually, actually the standard itself includes a reference. Every time we, for, for, one, one general reference is there, for each standard, there is one general reference and then we have a specific reference. Particularly on the accounting side, we have this thing. Uh Mustafa Kasim, uh is legal reserve at Central Bank which cannot be controlled by commercial bank subject to zakah. Uh actually it is in form of cash and cash receivables, so I personally believe it's subject to zakah, but as I mentioned, it is not the issue right now. But I believe AUFI Sharia standard considers it subject to zakah because it is, it is equivalent to cash. Uh Mr. Habibu Yunus, uh salaam alaikum sir, is there any provision of guidance in the standard on how the zakah to be distributed and how the beneficiaries to be identified? Insha Allah, it will be covered in the governance standard as I mentioned. I think it's Olya Nakrah, which mazhab was used by AUFI to create Sharia standard of zakah report, as we know there are four difference of school thought. AUFI Sharia standard board actually always comprise of five to seven Sharia mazahib. Um, uh, actually at times it is up to seven mazahib represented in our board, but right now I believe five, I believe. Uh actually technically speaking, six are actually reflected right now in our board. Uh most of the decisions are by consensus, very rarely there is a difference of opinion, if there is a difference of opinion between fakaha. At time the Sharia standard itself allows a, allows, allows one of the two options. Uh but however, uh generally speaking, this one we can say is based on the, uh on, on, on the, on the common grounds between mazahib. Except for one or two things which are leftover because, uh some of, one of the mazhab was not in favor of it, so some of the things were leftover, otherwise. I believe that it is, it is like on the common grounds of the four and five main mazahib. I would like to know how to implement the zakah in our policy accounting like accrual accounting, uh ruly moviezar. I, I, I would like to know, uh, I, I would just say that, uh, uh that actually. It will, uh, it will again be dependent on the regulatory, regulatory framework in your country and it will depend on the agreement with the part, with the parties. If you want your institution to be paying zakah on their behalf, it is better to sign contract and pass resolutions of the shareholders. To make sure that, uh, that the institution it becomes eligible to pay zakah. To make sure that uh that the institution, it becomes eligible to pay Zakat on their behalf as a, as an agent. But as of now, uh I, I can see that not all institutions are going for the, uh for the, for, for this thing. If it is not there, uh if it is not there, then actually, normal accrual accounting type accounting can be done only where we have the legal requirement for some countries. Other than that, normal accrual accounting will not be applicable and mainly the disclosures of this standard will be applicable. How about the retained earnings of the past year that is not distributed to the shareholder? Is it Zakat deductible? Uh technically speaking, yes, but the method in which we are calculating is the other way around. We are doing, taking the assets which are subject to Zakat at the value which is subject to Zakat and excluding the assets which are not subject to Zakat. Then we are reducing the liabilities which are subject to Zakat, uh which are adjustable for Zakat purpose. So, we reach a net equity. This net equity includes the past year's retained earnings. So, technically speaking, this is, this is included. But since the valuation method is different for Zakat base as compared to the accounting base, hence that it may not be exactly the same figure. But yes, generally speaking, vaguely speaking, yes, it is included. Has there been consideration if the draft is aligned with I F S B twenty-two standard on disclosure? Uh they have put some disclosure requirements, uh but that we will consider. I, I think they have some good disclosure requirements. Uh just brother Harun and Sister Farida and Majan, please make a note of it. Because there are some good disclosure requirements there. We will just map it. If some of the disclosure requirements are missing, we will try to add them here. Either here or in the FAS, uh or in the FAS one. Comment regarding appendix C, I propose identifying the eight categories. Yes, we agree that we, I mentioned that thing already that our Sharia committee also wants. So, we will be doing as per eight categories of Zakat as per Quran. And we all know that the institution developing the document that they start with regulation standards and cut and paste from illustration sample forms. Even if they intend to be illustrative, if this happens here, then institution will be combining categories and omitting one category. We agree. We agree. We, we, we don't have a disagreement with your point, brother Ubedro. Uh we will, we will incorporate. Insha Allah, it is also the comment of our Sharia committee. I think there are one or two questions which are going above. Let me. Realizable value for Ijarah assets, uh if I, I F I records, this brother Habib Rahman, realizable asset for Ijarah assets? I F I records it based on the outstanding principal amount. Shall it be revalued based on the definition? Uh. Uh actually, uh actually, it will be zero for, for most of the Zakat purposes, Zakat base will be zero. So, we are not asking to change the accounting, accounting will be as per old FAS eight or new FAS thirty-two. But, but for the purpose of Zakat, it will be actually zero value. Okay, uh regarding definition of Zakat, are right codes and law distinguished between rights? Actually, this is the definition coming from our Sharia standard, which is from Quran Haqum Malum. So, that is why we explained that it's a right which is on, applicable to the Muslims, uh like, but it is a right, uh religious right, Haqum Malum. So, that's why the definition is coming from the Sharia side and we did not amend it. We just added explanation to that, but we did not amend the original one. I, I agree that it's an obligation on the, on the person, but it's a, it's a right for Allah and the right for people. So, the, the, this is actually coming from the Sharia side. Uh example of point number seven, where Zakat reversal is recognized in equity. For example, for example, there was last year, my fair value of the Sukuk was one hundred and five. And this year, my, my fair value is ninety-five. Last year, Zakat was calculated based on one zero five. Now Zakat is calculated on ninety-five. So, it means that the Zakat will, will you goes down. Where the, the figure that goes down, the figure that goes down, it's actually like, it is going to reduce the amount of. It is going to reduce the amount of expense in the income statement. So, that part will be transferred here so that income statement, so that respective portions are shown at the respective places. Matching concept, what we call. Zakatabil assets are so, are many, so it cannot be applied to statement. Zakabes are based on net asset method only. Uh our opinion at nutshell, uh you can expand that statement. We have made it a summarize. But if you want to expand it to the notes level, you will have to expand it and you can still do it in the same manner. So, the statement is to be done in this manner. We do not want to, uh we do not want to go, have different method here. Expansion, if you feel that there are more and more type of assets, you can expand it. Or if you can want to do it on a disclosure on the club basis, you can do the disclosure on the club basis. Uh computation will be done for sure on individual asset basis because it's a religious obligation. You cannot just do clubbing for the computation purpose, but for disclosure purpose, yes, you can do the computer clubbing. Uh could you explain how effective method from Zakat can improve make welfare? This I have responded already. Treasury share I responded. Does long-term Murabah receivable? We responded. An Islamic bank obliged to pay Zakat on profit of Vakalla? O F website, this responded, legal reserve responded. This is any provision of guidance on the standard on how the Zakat is to be distributed and the beneficiaries to be identified? This is as, as I mentioned in governance standard. Uh the simple method, again, I'm sorry, at times, the questions and answers go away. The formula to calculate Zakat according to me as follows, net cash bank balances minus total liabilities. If the result more than Nisab, the excess of Nisab will be, uh Nisab will be two and a half percent, two and a half percent of the excess as Zakat. What's your opinion? Actually, it's not that simple, brother. Uh it is complex. It is not that simple. There are lot of things which are subject to Zakat which need to be considered. For example, if there is real estate asset for sale, there is, there are Murabah inventory. So, there are lot of things which are considered. Uh Zakat, Zakat is not after Nisab, Zakat is on total amount. If it exceeds Zakat Nisab, then Zakat is on total amount. To continue Zakat. Is it for trade Zakat? Do you agree? This question is not very clear to me, brother. I'm sorry. There is no Zakat institution in the country as a bank. If we create a Zakat fund as separate account and use for productive investment, how do we recognize the recipient retain the investment to the bank? Uh Zakat cannot be used for investments and for, and for loans. Uh there, the, the, most of the Fakah has this view. So, better, uh because most of the Fakah have issue of Tamlik, that you need to make the recipient a full and full owner. Without any hindrance, full owner of the Zakat amount. So, that's why mostly this investment option of Zakat funds will not be possible. What about Zakat payment of gold in bank vault? Uh we are, we are a bank and there is, uh there is, uh there is, there is gold that people have put in our vault. This is a form of Amana and there is, we are not responsible for it in any manner. So, there is no Zakat on that. The person who actually holds that gold is subject to pay Zakat. But this is not part of the financial statements and accounting. So, we do not consider it. Least to commonly use structure by Islamic banks shall be considered Ijarah asset, not Zakatabil or investment asset eligible for Zakat. Normally, leased assets, Ijarah assets are not subject to Zakat. Most productive active assets are not subject to Zakat. From an Islamic window perspective, funding from conventional parents shall be considered loan deductible from Zakat asset or equity on which Zakat to be paid. Uh it depends on the contract with the conventional, whether it is received as a loan or is it received as a, as a, as a equity. But the question again will arise that, that if it is a conventional institution, then whether by law, whether by law or by. Or by constitution documents, how you will be required? Because if the institution is doing, doing haram business, uh how it is, how it is going to have it by law or by, by this one, by this, uh, by this. Uh constitution documents. Yes, there can be one situation because in Saudi, maybe it can happen because all banks are also subject to Zakat. So, in that situation, it will apply and it will be considered. But then it will be the whole bank vitably subject to Zakat, not only the Islamic window. But for Islamic window disclosure, yes, you will reduce it. Agreed. Uh the application of Zakat standard on Takaful entities, actually, it's a good question, brother Sanjeev Agarwal. Thank you very much. I think, I think we, we just need to note it now that for when we do the guide, application guidance, we need to do it. And may, maybe even for the Zakat base computation, we will see if we can provide a Zakat base computation there. On the Takaful, we will be developing the illustratives as well. So, the Zakat base computation may be added to the illustratives of, to the illustratives of Takaful. Illustrated financial statement for Takaful. So, either we'll try to include it here or in the illustrated financial statement for Takaful. Brother Mufti Khajal Noor Hassan is deferred Zakat concept or in general Zakat concept, the current installment, installment only to exclude from Zakat calculation or one-year installment to exclude. A view of O F, O F, O F has a difference of view. I, I, the standard, as of now, on the liability side is talking about short term only, within twelve months only. But actually, this is one of the things which is considered, is still a difference of your opinion. Uh I, 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 generally speaking, it's a Sharia issue. I would not like to go in detail for that one, brother, right now. Uh for me, for me, if you ask me, my, my humble view, uh full, full amounts should be included both on asset and liability side. Because these are established and these are to be recovered. I'm. Uh okay, there is one question window. I, I'm going, okay, recording be available. I think full recording normally we don't make available. Recording is kept for taking comments. So, we normally do it for our purpose. Uh Zakat phase for trading entity are cash bank and liabilities. Because trade Zakat is calculated by net cash minus total liabilities and minus Nisab. Brother, this is a Sharia issue. I don't want to go into detail, but ever Sharia standard does not go like that. Uh it includes all the, all the inventories, et cetera, as well, which should be included at some, like whatever is for Ma- Malik Ijarah, that is to be included. Uh Zakat due from participatory stakeholders, does it require the stakeholders to provide consent for deduction of Zakat? Yes, for sure. Uh consent or an agreement has to be there for the section of Zakat. Otherwise, it should not be deducted. On appendix C, can you elaborate the administration and general expenses, staff cost appearing under the uses of fund? Amilin Aleha cost is part of it. So, what if, if there is, there are dedicated people handling this, 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 this function? Their cost can be charged to it as Amilin Aleha or as agent cost. But either, it depends whether the bank is in the situation of Amil or it is a situation of agent. In both situations, those costs can be added as expense. Should the I F I calculate not disturbing and not dispersing Zakat on shareholders equity and disclose its percentage in the financial statement that are, that are held responsible for this? Yes, this is possible. If it is not legally required, then it will appear possible for shareholders and others as well. So, if it is not required by law, not required by statute, not required by a shareholder resolution, then still it will be disclosed. The Zakat base will be disclosed, Zakat amount will be disclosed, Zakat applicable on shareholders will be disclosed. Uh this one is, uh this rate, brother Ahmad Usman, this rate is, is mentioned in the O F Sharia standard. That here, we are asking about the disclosure. Here, we are not mentioning about what rate to be used. Rather, we are just mentioning about the standard. Can the material be shared? I think brother Rizwan mentioned in the beginning that this material is exactly the same as the exposure draft. Exposure draft is available on our website for download. As mentioned for evaluation, inventory is by natural as well value. So, why the natural as well value in this, some mentioned it by Zafars and we ask what expense should be deducted? The point is that, that it is, uh the, 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 the fair market value in the market may not be applicable to you at times. Uh because you need to complete the inventory and you need to pack the inventory and you need to transport the inventory. So, your net realizable value which include transportation cost, packing cost, may, cost necessary to make the sale is actually the one that is applicable. According to O F, what Nisab is applicable, whether gold Nisab or silver Zakat, uh uh O F Sharia standard talks about the combination one. Uh that if there is a gold item, then gold, otherwise it is a, it's a silver one as per Sharia standard. Is there particular control by banking supervision of central bank to calculate of Zakat? Normally, the central banks are not handling this issue. In some countries, there are departments of Zakat that handle it. Otherwise, normally, it is kept, uh the normally in Muslim countries, uh we can see that the bodies are not, uh, the, the, the. The regulatory bodies are not entering into Zakat domain. How fair value reserves in equity, OCI reserve and exchange translation reserve to be treated between shareholders and depositors? Uh the, the, the road is depositors for the purpose of Zakat base? The question is not very clear. Okay, okay, got it. Actually, actually, whatever reserves are there, the Zakat will be applicable on assets. Zakat will be applicable on assets, not on the, uh Zakat will be applicable on assets, not on the reserve itself. But what will happen that when we calculate the Zakat, you will be allocating, when you calculate the Zakat, you will be allocating the counter effect to the, to these reserves. What about provision calculated according to FAS thirty? The provisions, uh we mentioned it, that provision for impairment, which is the best estimate of provision, of the provision, will be netted off from the receivables. Uh and rated off from the realizable values of the assets as needed. So, normally, they will be adjusted. So, with that, I think we have handled all the questions here. If there are any questions on the, on the, like people want to raise the questions by voice. Again, my apologies. It has taken too much time. Our apologies for mismanagement of time. Uh but if, if, I, I, I would suggest if we can conclude now because it's already nearly forty minutes past the original time. But if, if you insist, we can take one or two questions on the, on the voice.
Um I think there are only two questions really. Um one by sister Amal, sister Amal, would you like to ask a question by voice? And the other one is by Abdallah Nasir. Abdallah Nasir, would you like to ask a question? Or Muhammad now, Muhammad now? Abdallah Nasir has a question, I think. Abdallah Nasir, would you like to ask or it has been answered already? Okay, I think we can conclude.
I think, thank you very much, everybody, for very active participation. And I would like to like to thank all the, all the supporters of this event again. Masha Allah, a large number of participants has attended. We have been able to handle a lot of good questions. Uh again, I, I repeat this to him every time that whatever we have received as command, we will take them to the board. When I respond to something doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to actually, actually just, just like, you know, kill the comment. Rather, responding is important because we need to respond to you according to our understanding of the discussions that have taken place at the board, at the working group. But taking it, taking it, your comments, whatever your comments are, they're taking them to the board and the working group is important for us. And that's why we have, we have, we normally record it and we write down all the comments. With that, I would like to thank you again and I would request brother Rizwan to conclude without, without delay as it is already a bit, a bit delayed. Uh thanks again for continuing with us. Salaam alaikum, rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Thank you. Thank you very much, brother Umar, for a very engaging session, two, two and a half hour almost session. Uh apologies again for, to the, to the dear audience for keeping you behind. I think we are also holding while you are fasting. So, really apologies for that. But thank you very much for being very engaging, you know, during this public hearing and that's really the purpose of this call. Um and you know, of course, before we go away, we're, you know, first and foremost, I'd like to thank all our partners and collaborator, you know, with who. With whose support this event was only possible. And in particular, the support coming from National Committee for Islamic Economy and Finance, KNEKS, Baznas, in both of them based from, out of Indonesia. In particular, I'm thankful to, to, to the support of Mr. Venjer Rahadjo, the managing director and respected Mr. Noor Ahmed. And brother Sultan and his team. and brother Sultan and his team who've been very, very kind in 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 collaborating with us in this. From Malaysia, we have Pusat Punggudan Zakat, PPZ International Islamic University, Malaysia, Sadehinee, as well as Chartered Institute of Islamic Finance. I'm thankful to all of them on behalf of Aofi Professor Sandasane for for this very, you know, for all the collaboration that has come through, Professor Maria Faleman, you know, brother Azar Ismail, as well as Nuriyani, sisters Nuriyani, thank you very much for all the support that has come through. And inshallah, we look forward to organizing more such initiatives for the development of industry of the industry going forward. In the and also I'm thankful to the Aofi secretariat, you know, for organizing this event and also, you know, the the very important and hard work that has come from the working group as well as the the technical board. You know, in putting together this important standard. Before we go away, last thing, I think if if I can request maybe all the panelists to switch on their camera just for one minute and we will we will go away. So that we can take one maybe a picture for our usual things. I think that that will be very very much appreciated if you can ask everyone to switch on their their cameras and if the secretary can confirm they've taken the pictures. Brother Sultan, Dr. Kabir.
Hi, Zon, Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum salam. Can I ask you to start your video?
Oh, start my video. Yeah, I'm here, just a minute.
Okay. All right, okay. I think. Are you there? Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we've done that. So really appreciate you staying behind with us. Thank you very much for 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 staying and, you know, co-organizing this event. Inshallah, we look forward to having more such events in future. Thank you very much for all the support. With that, you know, wish you the rest of the holy month, a blessed rest of the holy month, inshallah. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala accept our siyam and kiyams and inshallah look forward to speaking to you very soon. With the Salaam alaikum wr wb.
Brother Mustafa, can I just ask you after the event, when that calculation part will come out, the standard?
We are just we are just starting working on that inshallah very shortly. And this is available in the Sharia standard. We just need to translate it into more accounting language and inshallah.
Inshallah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ansari. I thank you very much for the explanation. And I just I just hope you you may want to consider the fact that the FS nine, part of FS nine to be included in the standard. Yeah, just that. So, thank you very much.
All points will be taken to the working group, sister. Thank you very much again. Assalamualaikum warahmatullah. Thank you. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you very much. Assalamualaikum.
Assalamualaikum.
Wa alaikum salam.
Assalamualaikum.